Meeting for September 3rd, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us. We're in the new meeting room in the administrative room of the high school. It's quite lovely. Please let us know if you're having trouble with the visual, the audio, I understand is supposed to be much better in this room. I have a few announcements. One is I would like to announce some of the new programs that are at the Adult Center at Greenwood. They have pneumonia shots, flu vaccinations. What I thought was especially interesting is whooping cough vaccination recommended for new grandparents. Look at the website, see all the programs that are available. You might be surprised at some of those you might be interested in. They also offer health insurance counselor, blood sugar screening, and as you know, there's a new van. And van rides are offered this year for the Springfield Public Forum as well as the Symphony. So please go to the Adult Center. There's lots of very interesting things available to all the adults in town. Consider teaching a class or volunteering. I'd also like to thank the members of the committees who attended the DPW tour that we had. The town manager and DPW will be preparing a virtual tour with LCTV, which will be available on the website, hopefully within the next thirty days. So if you were unable to attend that one, you might be able to look it up in the LCTV. LCTV also informed us that all of our meetings are going to be archived and available through YouTube. And so if you need to see any old meetings, they will all be available on the website. Thank you. And now we're ready for visitor comments.
Good evening. My name is Richard Elias, 608 Frank Smith Road, and a member of the Finance Committee. I've had a few comments from people in the town saying how terrible it was that the quint truck wasn't passed at last meeting. And I explained to them, that wasn't anything saying we're not going to get the quint truck. It's just saying that before we put it up to a vote and set it up, there's some, how should I put it? Special considerations being given to how it's going to be run and stuff like that. That if we're going to ask the people of this town to commit money, we should have that before we put anything in. Second, there's a few times that I've heard at the meetings that people were complaining about the tax rate being set for business and for the people in the town at a different rate. I do agree that it would be not really worthwhile for us to make two different rates. But what we could do is use the same criteria for the homeowners as they do for the business people. Where they're really getting a break on some of the, quite a bit of the property in which they're using. I ask that to be considered. You mentioned the van being available. At the last town meeting, because of the parking and everything, you had service from the parking lots up to the school and back. Well, it's not going to be necessary for the next one, at least I hope. But that's not a bad idea for the senior citizens in town who would love to go to those meetings. But because of eye cars, other problems like that, that they really can't get out at night. And it's going to be dark that time. There's, when you were going through your meetings, indicating what you're trying to do, trying to accomplish. My statement has been for a long, long time, is we have to get all the funds, everything under one general control. And that means the schools too. They do a beautiful job here in the schools. I agree with that. But do they have to have their own finance department that's costing about $200,000? When our charter says they're not supposed to have that? I'm not saying we'll save $200,000 by bringing everything together under the town. But at least we're going to save maybe $50,000 and that can be put other places.
Thank you very much, Richard. We appreciate it. And all the times you do attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary, can I ask Mr. Elias a question about what he just said?
Usually visitors' comments don't have comments, but you can definitely make your own comment during the Select Board. It's usually not a back and forth.
Well, I understand. It's just, I just didn't understand what he meant. That's all.
Yeah, if you ask him for clarification.
Can I do that? Mr. Elias, you made reference to something about the different rates for homeowners and businesses. And then you said that homeowners should get the same break or something to that. I just didn't know what you were referring to.
When the businesses are, put their assessment in, they make it, this part is at one rate. This is at another rate for what it's being used for. At least that's what I've understood by the people that have been talking to me and some of them in the trades. And we don't have that as a homeowner in this town. We all have one based on the square feet and what's in the home and everything like that. I think that would be the only reasonable thing to do, to make everybody on a level playing field.
Thank you. Next is consent agenda, but we actually am going to remove the consent agenda and we'll just go through it because I believe everything other than block party will probably have discussion. All right, we're, the minutes.
Now, we approve the August 5th, 2013 regular minutes of the Select Board.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second for purposes of discussion.
Okay, and discussion.
Yeah, this, this says Mr. Foster said Long Meadow sold a quint in 1992. It wasn't a quint, it was a ladder truck.
Okay, any other corrections?
Under B, I guess, old business, 1B, where it says Mr. Grant moved to open a fund to accept private donations. And then it says motion seconded by Mr. Grant? It makes it sound like I made the motion and then seconded it, which I don't think is possible. And so I don't think that's what happened. I don't have a specific record.
I seconded the motion.
Okay.
Any other corrections? Can we go ahead and approve those with the corrections? Is that okay with your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so with the amended corrections, all those in favor of accepting the August 5th minutes? All those opposed? Okay. And then August 14th, special meeting? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the August 14th, but I do have an amendment to it, so, or correction, so, as corrected.
Any second?
Yes, second.
Okay, and discussion or corrections?
Yeah, and there's just, I think it's a typo in, let me just find it. In, under casino discussion with Attorney Martell, the fourth line down, it says, "Under the terms of the Massachusetts Gaming Commission", I think it should be funded by MGM but directed by PVPC.
Any other corrections?
Isn't that what it says? Or are you changing it?
I'm changing it to that. I don't think that's what it says right now. Is that what it says?
It says be funded by MGM but directed by PVPC.
Okay. It says Massachusetts Gaming Commission?
Under the terms of the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, be funded by MGM but directed by PVPC.
Okay, then I guess, all right, mine was different.
Any other concerns? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye. I'll move we accept the August 19th, 2013 regular meeting minutes.
Second?
Second.
All right, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? All right, the minutes passed. Now, we'll go to the Board and Committee Appointments from the August 19th.
I'd like to move that we approve William Egan for a three-year term for the Cultural Council.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I'm going to move that we approve Margaret Rakas for a three-year term for the Park and Recreation Commission.
Any second?
I'll second for purposes of discussion.
Okay, and discussion.
I think we got four people. I don't think there should be a nomination for any one person. I think we should poll the entire board for who we vote for.
Good point.
And then we have to, we still have to then have the motion. So you're saying in the discussion you would like us to discuss?
Yeah, because a motion, a motion can be presented and carried and you can put a negative vote on, but you'll never get to endorse who you were going to endorse.
Okay, so during the discussion, why don't we do a straw vote? Who we were going to vote, does everyone agree with that process? And then we'll go back to the motion because it is on the floor. Okay, all those in favor want Michael Brown? Okay, Margaret Rakas? Brett Levy?
LaValle.
LaValle, sorry, one?
That's right.
James Goodheins? Okay, so we are back down to the motion that's on the floor. Any other discussion on that motion?
Yeah, you know, the reason why I would support Brett LaValle is, you know, what I heard at the meeting was there were a couple of the candidates said we need to expand programs under the Park and Rec Department to, for high school kids. And I don't think that's necessarily the purview of the Park and Rec Department to, and there are programs for high school kids. My son's participated in them. I believe when it comes to high school student athletes that don't participate in the sport of the, at the high school, there's a lot of intramurals that go on here at this high school. And I, the fear that I have is the park board over the years has continuously added programs without dropping programs. And what you have now with these confines, everybody talked about field management and making sure we utilize that space. And we heard at the last interviews as well, that the issue is we keep adding, 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 but we don't subtract anything. And the perfect example is Ultimate Frisbee, which has grown tremendously. But it takes up the same field space that lacrosse uses and baseball uses, et cetera, up at Wolf Swamp Field. So my concern is I don't necessarily, you know, and those were two little buzzwords that I caught in the interviews with a couple of the folks. And all of them, you know, Michael Brown, I think, you know, he talked about his coaching experience. And first of all, I think they were all good candidates. The new blood that put their names in, I think, were exceptional in the sense of their passion for why they were applying for. So I just want to say thank you for putting your name in. And it's not a strike against it, but I just, I'd rather see someone who's going to go in and understand the spectrum of the sports programs, but not necessarily trying to expand what's offered. Or at least be objective and say, here's what we should offer, here's what we should pull from the table. And I've attended a lot of park board meetings and I don't, I really haven't heard too many things about the things we should pull off the table in our offerings. And I think we really ought to look at, the park boards really ought to look at, you know, the cross, cross program offerings between the library, the park board, Park and Rec Commission, or Park and Rec Department, and the Council on Agent. Because I don't think all three bodies are necessarily working together to, and I think there's a lot of overlap between those three bodies in terms of programs that are offered. But that's a down-the-road issue, I think, for them. So that was my support for Brett.
Thank you. Richard?
Mark raised his hand.
I was going to support and will support Margaret Rakas. And primarily, I believe it's important that we get a perception or perspective on the Parks and Recreation Committee that's different from youth sports. And I think she would bring that, although she was clearly knowledgeable about youth sports and spoke about things like Title IX at the time. But, but I'm concerned that we've had a youth sports, I'm going to use this term with some concern, but nevertheless, we've had a stranglehold on, that youth sports has had on our Parks and Rec Committee. And, you know, it, parks are about youth sports, this and youth sports, that. And I clearly support youth sports. My kids played youth sports. I think it's important. But we have interests in parks on other things. We can't be, you know, we've tried to not get Bliss Park turned over to all youth sports. We've had little action on things other than youth sports and youth sports, you know, and how it's directed. I think our Parks and Recreation Department Head does a very good job. I think youth sports are well, well represented as it is on the Parks and Recreation Committee. And I would hope that Margaret Rakas would bring an additional perspective beside youth sports. Like Paul, I thank everybody for putting their name in for this position. I know that there's a lot of work that goes on there and, but I would continue to support Margaret Rakas.
Richard?
All the accolades and good things have already been said, so I just.
That's why I should go first.
Echo, echo, echo. I did take the opportunity to go back and look at the interviews again. And I, and you're right, all four people are fantastic. And we're gifted to have that many people show up at one time and want to serve. It's actually, it's a shame we don't have more openings. But after reviewing them all, I felt, I just felt more comfortable about Mike Brown's avenue of answering and his thought process of going into the sport. So that's why I pledge my support to him, but it certainly doesn't deter from any of the other applicants.
Alex?
I guess I would echo what I would say. I would have no problem with any of these four serving. I think they do, all do a great job. I was actually impressed with all four. And the reason why I'm voting for Mr. Goodheins, because I think there's an issue that sort of transcends just these four individuals, which is Mr. Goodheins was, as I understand it, rejected for a position, even though there wasn't been a competitor at the time. I believe that was shortly before the election. And I can't help but think that the opposition to him stemmed from the fact that he was willing to step up and criticize a decision by the Select Board. And I think there's an issue that we have with appointed boards, which is that appointed board members are concerned about saying something that the Select Board might not like. So I think there's a pretty clear force kind of keeping people's mouths shut. And, and I think that exists because people really value serving on these boards. I mean, Mr. Goodheins had done it for six years, spent a lot of time on it. He's obviously qualified. I don't think there's any knock on that. It seems like the only concern was that he criticized the decision by the Select Board to not support the capital project having to do with the Wolf Swamp, Wolf Swamp Fields. So I think to see Mr. Goodheins go down a second time would send an unfortunate message to all appointed board members. I think we need, and I've expressed this previously in the Long Meadow News in a column earlier this summer, that I think we need people who are going to tell us we're wrong, you know, to tell us, you know, when the emperor has no clothes. Otherwise, we're going to have a lot of yes people and we're going to have less robust discussion. So it's for that reason that I'm going to support Mr. Goodheins. It's absolutely no knock on anybody else. I would be completely comfortable with every other person that applied.
And I think the struggle that we saw, everyone has support on the board and they are four very qualified candidates. And I follow what Richard says, it's a shame we can't have four positions. And I hope that whoever is not taken, it will, will go on other boards. And I picked Ms. Doctor, actually, Rakas, because I liked her point of view about bringing in intramural sports. There's a group of residents that don't go out there, use the field, and they're not the young people. And it would be really nice to see more active use in intramural, so I thought that was a wonderful idea. And I like the idea of supporting new people that are coming on the board. Though I have to commend Attorney Goodheins for the amount of work he's done on not just that committee, but two committees, also CBC. And hopefully he will still continue to work on those other committees. So right now we have a motion on the floor and, Steven?
If I could just make one comment about it. Obviously, I don't have a role in the selection process, but I was observing the interviews with everyone else. And one of the things I think operationally that, you know, we talk about Parks and Rec Board and the Parks and Rec, more specifically the Parks and Rec Department, a substantial part of what that department does, and certainly the biggest part from a financial impact standpoint, is run a daycare center full-time. And I think people, because it's not tied to sports or being out in the parks, that people don't really think about that function as a Parks and Rec function, but nevertheless it is. And I thought, for me, what stood out from Dr. Rakas's remarks was her, she seemed to speak to that at a level that the other candidates didn't address. So that, so when I think about what stood out for me for her, that was one that I don't hear very often in the dialogue on Parks and Rec. That said, I concur with the board. I thought everyone was really, presented themselves very well and seemed like they were to really commit their time and energy to the board.
Yes.
I've got two comments. First of all, Steven, I think that's highly inappropriate for you to weigh in on a candidate that the board's going to pick. You said it, you're not part of the interview process. You shouldn't add your comments to the, I really, I think it's totally inappropriate. And quite frankly, Alex, I think you need to understand some facts or ask some questions before you make broad statements that the board denied Mr. Goodheins an appointment on the park board because of the Wolf Swamp Fields. During our debate, that never came up, not once. Not one Select Board member brought that up about the dissent that, about the Wolf Swamp, Wolf Swamp Field project. So you're wrong on that one. And I really take offense that that's what you're pointing the finger at this board, saying that's why we didn't appoint them. Because that's not what the facts were. And I would just hope that next time you're going to point the finger at the board for not doing something that, you know, you don't look at it from the perspective of writing for the news as opposed to asking some questions of the board about potentially what happened back then, or what did happen back then. It's in the minutes. And if it's not reflected in the minutes, then you should have asked us before making a blank statement that that's why we voted against the person. It had nothing to do with it. And I don't think, there wasn't one comment by any of the board members, including Mr. Borowski, regarding that issue. And that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. So vote on the motion that's on the floor, which for Dr. Rakas? All those in favor? All those opposed?
I'm not going to oppose it.
Makes sense. All right, so the motion passes. And the next committee we have to work on is the Audit Committee that Joseph Rinaldi interviewed for. Is there a motion to appoint him to the one-year term, three-year term, or a associate? There are two, one-year associate terms. And are you, do you need a motion?
No, I'm not going to.
Let's wait for the discussion. Anyone who is going to put a motion on the floor to appoint him?
I'd put a motion on the floor for possible appointment as an associate member only.
Okay, any second for that? Okay, discussion. Mark, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask a question, which was, at the time we were interviewing, we decided to sort of kick this down the road about his eligibility for, I guess, a voting position versus a non-voting. Do we have any further clarity on that?
My understanding from Attorney Martell is that to be, you need to be a voting resident.
To be?
To serve. And I asked him, he felt that directly you cannot be a voting member. Indirectly, he felt that by reading the passages, that he would, that he would question his ability to be a non-voting member.
So in other words, he could only be a non-voting member?
He definitely could not be a voting member. That was the statement. And so that's why I personally am supporting the one-year associate. And that does not solve our problem with the Audit Committee, but I do want to support him because I feel it's good to have young people getting involved. And we did have that one area where, on the Tech Committee, we had a non, a voting, but non-resident appointed. And Mark, you wanted to?
No, go ahead.
Oh, I didn't see Richard, sorry.
Did, did you just say that the attorney said that it could be problematic to have him even in an associate membership?
Yes, because he said if you read the two parts together, he felt that that could be.
I'd like to withdraw my motion then.
Okay.
Yeah, because if the attorney has already stated that it'd be inappropriate, there's no sense in us pushing forward on this issue. As much as we'd like to see young people served, but if we can't do it, we can't do it.
There's a conflict, because according to our town clerk, you don't even have to be a resident to be on a committee. There was nothing regarding, I asked specifically if you have to be a registered voter. She said, she checked even with the state clerk's office. And the answer was, you don't have to be a registered voter to be on a committee. So I like to see what the, if we can find out what the discrepancy is between the two. Because either our town council's wrong or our clerk's wrong. And our clerk, I think, went through the proper channels to, and if it's the town council's interpretation of the law, then perhaps we need a second opinion. Because if the clerk says we don't need to be a registered voter to be on a committee, then perhaps we don't need to be a registered voter to be on a committee. And I, I mean, the clerk deals with it every day. Mark, it's not in there.
No, I know it's not in here. I was looking for something.
He was looking at two different passages, and that's where he was making the initial interpretation that, so what we can do is we can postpone this to the next one. And I did not know about the clerk making that recommendation.
No, I mentioned that at the meeting, we did the appointment, that that's what the clerk said, that you don't, because I think someone asked, do you have to be a registered voter? And I had asked that of her previously, just before the meeting, just to find out. She checked with other town clerks. She checks the state, the state's office and wherever the state clerk's office is, you know, for, office in the state for clerks. And you don't have to be a registered voter. That's why the person from Springfield was on the Tech Committee.
Okay, since we do not have a motion on the floor now, why don't we wait this in our next meeting on the 9th? We can put that in first thing.
Yeah. One thing I just, I, you know, I actually reached out to the Audit Committee members to find out what they were thinking. And they reminded me that the requirement is that a member of the Audit Committee have experience in. And it listed three or four things, finance, accounting, or management, and where you serve on the Audit Committee. And, you know, that doesn't, it doesn't say what type of experience. But one would think that it would be some type of profession. that it would be some type of professional experience in one of those three areas. And that's one of the reasons that I was concerned with appointing Mr. Rinaldi, because he lacked the experience needed to meet that requirement of an appointment to the Audit Committee.
And I did speak to a member also, and they said they'd welcome him, but of course, we need to get regular members as associate member. That really wouldn't be what they need, which unfortunately, right now, there's a serious problem. We do not have enough voting members. And I think everyone on the board, we have to try to reach out and see who we can get to come in, and that's a very, not all towns have an Audit Committee, but this is a really important part, I think, of the process. So hopefully, we'll get someone in, and we will put this vote on the Audit Committee, whether it's associate or full-term for the ninth.
Ray, I just was going to make a point to, I guess, reinforce what Paul was saying. Now, I know the school building committee has a large number of non-residents, so those are non-voting people. So, I mean, it sounds like this is a kind of a live legal question, but we ought to get the answer to it. And it could be that he is eligible now. The question is, if he's eligible, is it a good thing for him to be on the committee, which is the issue you're raising?
Well, and just remember, the school building committee people who are there, who are non-residents, are there by statutory requirement of the state.
Actually, that's not true, but...
By the MSBA requirements of the state.
It's not required. But anyway, that's a different issue, but...
So we'll move on away from the interviews now and go to the block party request.
I move that we approve the block party application for Dover Road for September 15th, 2013. I'm sorry, September 14th, 2013. That's the right date.
Second.
Any discussion?
Actually, I haven't, and I don't know, maybe nobody knows the answer to this. It wasn't clear to me, I mean, I guess, I mean, as I read this, it looks like they're going to block off part of a road, and it's on behalf of one person. Is it possible for a single household to block off a road?
If they get approved by the police department, yes.
Okay.
And us, yes. Supposedly, Alex, the rule is they're supposed to have the approval of their neighbors, and that's what I think everybody's banking on, that before they submitted this, that, I'm just, that's the, you know, so...
The assumption you're...
And I don't even know if one neighbor objected, would that be an issue or not?
Right.
But, yeah.
I guess I, my street, we've done a few block parties, but it's been a street-wide thing, you know, like we've organized it, and so everybody sort of is invested in it. But I guess that was just my question.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We're moving on to whole business, and we're, the first issue on the table is the casinos. And one of the things that's come up multiple times this past few weeks, actually, is we get a lot of emails asking individual select board members their opinion on the, what we're doing with the casinos, and also, people have come before us and have also asked us. So should we have a general response on our position that is written as the select board so we get out one opinion as these emails come in and people approach us and write to us? What is the feeling?
I think that, quite frankly, before we go and do that, because I haven't had anybody ask me my opinion, I've had emails telling me their opinion, which is fine. And my suggestion is pro or con, write as many emails as you can to the select board to let us know how you feel. But I think before we actually have an opinion that goes out, is that we have, we have, today we declare a date to have a public forum to hear this out from town residents. I think only from that point, I mean, we can have five different opinions, well, I don't think theoretically you can have, I guess you can have five different opinions, but, but, I mean, you either want a casino or you don't. I don't know how many, but I guess there's variations. But the reality is, I think before we make a decision, we need to hear from people. And I'd like to come away from tonight and at least have a date that we're going to set to have a public forum to get people to come in and pro or con and talk to the board about their feelings of a casino. I think there's a lot of intelligent people that are doing research out there because they're really afraid of this, but there's probably also people who want this there, you know, who want the entertainment and so forth, and I think we need to hear from all of them. And there's going to be a direct impact to Long Meadow, and I think it would be imprudent for the board to state a position today without hearing from people, because if the, you know, overwhelming results are that 85% of the people in town want a casino, then I think we want a casino, but I don't think that's the case. But the last poll I saw for a casino in this neck of the woods was a 50-50 split years ago when they, when they were talking about Palmer. But I really like to hear from people, and I think they, I think they want to be heard, and, you know, the emails are a form of it, but, you know, just as, just as any other issue that we have before the town, I don't know why we would make a decision without hearing from folks first as to where they are. And I think at that point in time, we would have a presentation from our town manager as well, we'd have, you know, some impact studies perhaps that we have information on already. But I wouldn't want to come up and formulate an opinion right now without knowing how everybody else feels.
Okay. Alex?
I mean, I've said this several times, that I think we do need to weigh in, and that is a separate question from how we approach this surrounding community agreement. I've actually drafted a resolution that I'd like to pass around for purposes of discussion. It's a resolution that basically expresses our view that the casino would be bad for Long Meadow, casino in Springfield or West Springfield, and that we urge the Massachusetts Gaming Commission not to issue a license to a casino in Springfield or West Springfield. The way it's drafted, we have a stronger opinion against the casino in Springfield than we do against West Springfield, because the Springfield Casino would be more harmful, but they would both be harmful. The, I think a resolution like this is actually similar to what AGWAM is going to be voting on. City councilors in AGWAM have proposed a resolution similar to this, there are a number of whereas clauses which explain their opposition, and then the, you know, final paragraph is similar to what I've drafted. I think it's a basic question of, you know, is it good for Long Meadow or not? I don't really see any upside to a casino for Long Meadow. There's lots, there's lots of downsides, and I'm actually afraid that the downsides are going to be severe. And the Gaming Commission has said that it will consider the input of surrounding communities. So I would, I mean, if we're not prepared to vote on this resolution today, I understand that, but I would ask that folks take it into account and that we vote on it in the relatively near future.
Mark?
All right. Alex, thank you for putting this resolution together. I, although personally I support it, I think it's premature to take a vote on this today. And I would support Paul's call for a forum to listen to the residents and see how they feel, but I would certainly like to see us schedule a vote on this or a similar resolution or feeling of the board following a, following a town forum that's open to comments by our, by our residents. I think it's important that we do take a stand, one way or the other, on the issue of a casino. The only thing I might do is separate out Springfield from West Springfield, just so that they're not quite so intertwined, because I think we're going to get different opinions and, and, you know, it's like, you know, you can't, you can't, may not be able to get a strong resolution if you're trying to put too much into it at one point as you can if you've got a single resolution. But be that as it may, you know, I think we ought to schedule a forum fairly quickly and follow that with a resolution. One other quick thing I wanted to say is, I don't think we need to wait to have every i dotted and every t crossed to do this. I think data is important, but I think we all understand the impact the town will have and whether the, the impact is, you know, is $400,000 or $550,000 in worth of, it's 3,000 extra cars or 3,400 extra cars on a Friday night. The point is, there's going to be more cars, and there's going to be a cost to the town. And so we ought to do this sooner rather than wait to get every i dotted and t crossed.
No, I, I'm not going to be in agreement or disagreement or anything. The only thing I have a problem with is this, is it makes a lot of assumptions that are not proven, that are not factual at this point. And to me, this is, this is a document put, basically put out because somebody doesn't want a casino, but it's not being, it's not factual. The information presented here, there's, you know, it says impose real and quantifiable financial costs likely to impose, and there's no, there's no justification for these statements. Now, this may be the way these resolutions are typically worded, and if it is so, it's, that's just the way they're worded. But I like documents that actually come from a little bit of research and background and say, these are the known impacts. And we keep talking about this traffic on Long Meadow, and we don't know what it is. We just keep talking it. We have no idea what the impacts are. We know what happens when 91 gets shut down, traffic rolls down through the middle of town. But we don't know what the impact may be on a Friday night with 91 running full steam and we add another 10,000 vehicles to it. Because we don't have any, we have not, there's no traffic studies placed before us, we have no idea what the impacts are. So we're guessing, and I don't like guesswork.
I think that brings up the question which I'd like the board to answer. Now, I know you're talking about the forum, and we've sort of batted about having this forum, and there was a discussion that we should wait until the MEPA, is that how you say it, process is completed, so we have something to present to people in regards to traffic and some database as to for what's going on. Now, I know we, we have, and I'd written down the information that we got from the casinos on the number, the increase in cars that they were expecting, so we could go and we could present something. Like they said, an extra 75,317 per week was going to come into the area, 40% coming from the south. That was Penn National. MGM was saying similar numbers, so they weren't far off. Do you want us to go with these basic numbers? Go ahead and have the forum, or should we wait till we have more concrete information? Like Mark Gold calls it, do we stop at the 80% and give them the 80%, or do we give them the new stuff that's coming in, and we set this up in, would it be October? Can we look to that? That process will be over in October, and are we talking all the way in November?
I think in terms of the traffic, I don't even know that I would qualify those numbers that were, that were bandied about early on in the process as 80%. As we discussed earlier, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is coordinating the traffic study. I know they have an aggressive timeline, I have not, we're supposed, they're supposed to be coming to each town, that would be a part of it, to discuss their scope of work and give the town the option to be there, to participate. I haven't, I haven't heard from them as to when that is scheduled for. I think, there's two schools of thought, I think, that we discussed earlier. If we want to have a forum to allow people to express their views, which I think is beneficial, then we can do that at any time. If we want to have a forum to communicate to the public the information we receive that is based on Pioneer Valley Planning Commission studies, that is based on the environmental impact report that the developer's preparing to go over in a little bit, then we're, that timeline is really going to be set by others. Other people are controlling when those deliverables will be, will be in hand. So I, it's really up to the board what they feel the, the purpose of the forum is.
Ray?
Yeah.
There actually is quite a bit of information out there, and Mr. Foster, you, I think you may be denigrating the resolution a bit too much, but...
Well, excuse me, denigrating, I purposely said, I'm not denigrating the resolution, I said, I feel that there's more information needs to be put in. There's a difference in those two terms. Okay?
Okay.
This, there's no factual information here, it's all hypothetical, and we've been, we're going through Groundhog Day. We're in the same discussion we've had for the last six damn meetings on this issue. We're not moving forward. Now, the town manager is supposed to have got some information on this traffic study. Where is the information so we can at least know today? When are they coming out here? This was asked the last meeting. That's the point, Alex, we're not moving forward.
I understand. Actually, if I could, I think I have the floor here. I guess what I was going to say is, where, any study is a prediction. Nobody can tell you what will happen in the future. Impossible. This is what judges do every day of the week. When they sentence somebody, they assess their futurist dangerousness. You can get all the facts you want about what's happened in the past, any prediction about the future is inevitably an approximation. But what we can do is look at the impact that casinos have had in Southern Connecticut. I think you, Paul, mentioned that at the last meeting. That's valuable information. There are people who can talk about the impact of a casino in Detroit, Michigan. That's been, and more particularly on Foxwoods and Mohegan Sun. A group got together when they were considering a casino in Foxborough, they put together a great documentary. It's on a website, you can read it now, it's called No Springfield, NoCasinoSpringfield.com. NoCasinoSpringfield.com. The documentary is there, there's a lot of facts about what has happened in Connecticut. I think that's our best predictor of what's going to happen in the future. So I think that's something that we can look at, and it's something that town residents look at. So I guess, and Mr. Foster, I'm not trying to get into an argument, I didn't take umbrage, but in terms of it being factual, I don't think in the sense of what you're saying is factual, it's even possible, because it's all in the nature of predicting what's going to happen in the future.
So, go ahead, Paul.
You know, Richard, kind of was going down the road, I was. We have a agenda item to take a position on something which we, the select board, have been presented with no, no data. There's not a piece of data that we've been presented with that, from anybody, from consultant, from the town manager, from MGM, from the city of Springfield, West Springfield, whatever, to tell us about the impact of this casino traffic-wise or anywhere. We don't have a, we don't have a citation or a policy to protest the Big E, yet no one's done the traffic study on the Big E, it gets just as clogged up, there's a lot of beer being served at the Big E, and, you know, and my only point is that I think that you do need something to come before this board to say, here's what the projected impacts are going to be. This isn't Southern Connecticut, it's a lot different down there than it is up here in terms of geography and everything else like that. It's not Detroit, it's not, it's Long Meadow, and it's Springfield. And for us to take a position on anything that we have not had a fact sent to us on, there isn't, there's not one report that we have, and I, and I don't understand how we could take a position on it without having it. And again, if 85% of the community wants a casino, I, and I don't think that's the case, but if it were the case, if you had a forum to find out where the people stand, I think that gives you some idea of where this board should go.
So I guess that was my question, is if we're doing the forum, do we want to have the forum in October? Do we want to wait till we get more data together and wait till November?
I'm with Richard, we're doing growing, how they, you can't wait anymore. You just can't wait anymore.
So we should have, the forum, you believe should be done in October?
I think you have a forum to hear what people think.
Okay.
Because they're reading these things, they're going to websites, and they're going to have an opinion about it. But before we take a stance on it, I mean, you know, I understand there's a traffic study that's going to come by, and they got numbers, 40% of X. Compare that to the Big E traffic, and I think Richard's dead on. We're looking at traffic as a singular issue, that is not the issue with the casino, it's all the other issues that come with it, DUIs and things like that, that the traffic's going to be probably the tamest part of it, especially after the casino's been open for a while and it's not new anymore, as you see down in Southern Connecticut where their traffic has lightened up. So my, my only point is, I'm tired of waiting on this issue, I'm tired of talking about the same things over and over again. If you schedule a forum for the public, schedule a forum for the public to talk to us.
Okay.
And then when we get that information, then schedule another forum to talk to the public, and I don't think there's anything wrong in doing that.
Okay, so you'd prefer in October? Is there consensus? Anyone else feel that October's too soon?
October's too late.
Too late?
Too late? You want the end of September?
If, if we're listening, why wait? If we've got to wait to get some data, then we wait to get data. But I think a forum should be for us to listen.
Okay.
That's part of our job.
All right. So if we look at, I'm trying to look at the dates that we're talking about, the 20, I was looking at the holidays. I didn't want to get into the holidays, which means we're looking at the first week in October. Is that all right with everyone? Because the holidays still continue on the 25th?
So what date are you...
I was looking for the week of October 1st, or do you feel we need to push it, and we could go to the last week in September if it's okay, because we're talking about, Sukkot still doesn't end until Wednesday?
You can do it the 17th or the 18th or the...
Oh, you can? Okay. All right. So I will try, I will send out a poll and see...
On Tuesday, the 24th. I mean, there's a lot of days available.
I'll see.
I generally don't want to do the weekends, but... Generally don't want to do the weekends, but...
We'll, we'll send out a poll and see when everyone is available. And I'll start the dates from the 17th on.
17th of September?
Yes. Oh, when...
That's good.
That's good? Okay.
That's good.
No, we, we will work it, I want everybody there for it.
Well, I can tell you right now, I won't be back till October 3rd.
October 3rd.
Right.
I think then we should be looking at the week of October 3rd. You'll be back Thursday, the 3rd?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what I will do, before we go into worrying about all that, I'm going to be sending out, and we'll get that scheduled in the next day or two. And so we'll go ahead with the, the forum now. We won't wait till we get more information.
Have, have we heard anything from our interstate people? Has there been any communication coming back with them on traffic?
On PVPC people?
No, no, I'm talking about the interstate, on our interstate people down here. Because the traffic flow is going to fall on them. It's not on us.
Oh, you're talking about Enfield?
Yeah.
Oh.
Not Enfield, on your, on the MDOT. What's MDOT's feeling? Is there any input coming on?
Mass DOT.
They're still working on it, aren't they?
Yeah. They're still, they're still working on their projections for the...
Because the traffic is going to block the interstate before it blocks us. I mean, I, you know, you're saying 300, see what I mean? 300,000 vehicles doesn't mean anything unless you have the traffic study and says, what's the capacity of 91 at full-fledged speed? Then you start to talk something that makes sense. But just to throw a figure out without an impact, it just, it doesn't have much meaning.
That conference we attended, my understanding is Mass DOT said they weren't going to even start looking at the studies. When, what month was that? That they weren't going to start looking at the studies sometime the end of the summer? And then they were going to be weighing in on where things are.
But all these traffic figures you're talking about, they're not coming through the middle of Long Meadow.
No.
They're, they're going past Long Meadow on Interstate 91. So the impact, it seemed like by now we would have comments out of them saying what, what they feel the impacts are. Because they're going to be a major ruler in this. Because if they're clearly stating that their system's going to be overrun, and it, it's regularly, in reoccurring basis, we're going to have traffic coming down through the middle of town to get away from the, the big bend down there, that's going to be a major consideration.
Yeah.
Murray, and this is not the appropriate place to, to debate this probably, but Richard, I want you to just give some thought to the fact that in the mornings, people coming through East Long Meadow and the industrial park in East Long Meadow, the, the day doing that, you know, it's not just the master, the, excuse me, Route 91, the people that are going to be going to the casino. It's people coming from eastern Massachusetts, excuse me, Massachusetts towns east of Long Meadow, going through their, who've tried to use secondary routes, which will take them through Converse Street, Laurel Street, and then, you know, even on Converse Street and Laurel Street back up. People then, who think they know their way will find even tertiary roads instead of secondary roads. I think, and that's what a, a, a good traffic study will, will tell us. On the other hand, I, I still think that we ought to be listening to the people rather than telling people what we're going to, you know, what, what we want to do. I think we ought to, ought to listen and hear what's going on. I am very concerned that the timing of the PVPC is still unknown to us. I think that if we don't, that we ought to ask them tomorrow for their timing. And if their timing's not acceptable, then we go do it ourselves and get timing that's acceptable. And I know, Stephen, you've been a big advocate for letting them do the job, but I've been summarily disappointed over and over again with PVPC and the time limits at which they do things. That predates you, and I can give you chapter and verse. Okay? So I have no confidence that they will get us something in a manner that meets our timing needs. They'll tell us, but they won't do it. I want to know their timing. I want to know their timing immediately. They have very, very little credibility with having pulled this stuff off in the past. And again, that predates you. You have no reason to, to, you know, be concerned with it. But I do. And if we don't get something from them and don't get a date from them quickly, we're just going to branch out on our own, even if it costs us a few bucks, because at least we'll know we have something.
Murray?
Stephen, I think that it, it's worth it for us to, I remember we had a meeting with Tim Brennan before you came on. And it's, I think it's worth it to have a follow-up meeting. I know that it, it's not worth it to bring Pioneer Valley Planning Commission in here to speak to us...
Why not?
Until we're sure that they really have something to say.
But, but, but we ought to let them come in here and say, when are you going to have this? You know, when are you going to have this?
We're not going to talk about something like this ever.
I don't think PVPC really cares about where we're going to take our position on the casino. And I don't, I agree with Mark. I don't, I'm not, I, I think I voiced it at the last meeting. And I don't, I think for us to wait for PVPC to do their study and to come back and hopefully do it the way that we want to see it in Long Meadow, is, we're, we're chasing fool's gold at that point in time. They're a competent group, but they're, they're not, the, the biggest customer overall is the city of Springfield. And, 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 you know, we're a small piece of this whole casino thing. And my attitude is you got to look out for yourself when it comes to this, as opposed to this big organization that's going to do a study for the alt, for the region. And I think to Mark's point, you know, and, and I agree with him, it's not just the traffic coming up 91. Go stand out there and any more. We've all done it with a campaign sign out there. And you know the traffic, most of it's not from Long Meadow. You know, and it's coming down that, the, coming down Forest Glen. You know, and it's going to be those, those side streets are going to feel the impact little by little, rather than, you know, the, the main, that, like that Big E type of hit where you get a, or an accident that you get that big traffic flow down Route 5.
Alex?
You know, I, I think I'm one step beyond where Mark is. I, I am so concerned, I mean, I've, I've been beating this drum every meeting that we've talked about it, about the timing. I, 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 I think the time is over, waiting for PVPC. And to Richard's point, I think you're dead right. I am amazed that we have not, I, I've been looking around, like what pieces of paper do I have about this casino? We keep talking about it. There's nothing. I, I went on the website for the Mass Gaming Commission. There was supposed to have been a letter that was sent out to surrounding communities on August 20th. Did we get that? No.
I saw it on the website.
Oh, you saw it on the website. I mean, so...
We didn't get it?
I, I, not that I've seen it.
So, so to me, that's a major issue. That, that's almost a communication, does Mass Gaming Commission does not consider a surrounding community? What is the position of MGM? We've heard little sweet nothings from MGM. Verbal assurances that...
I did get that after we started. They, they sent it because I, I'm new. It was not in their database. And so they sent it to the generic town hall email address, and I think some, it probably was regarded as spam or something like that. But I did end up getting it from them. And I did talk to the ombudsman, and that was a clerical error that we clarified. So sorry about that.
So I guess what I'm getting at is, I, I would like to make a motion at tonight's meeting to hire an expert to conduct a traffic study. I think we're out of time. And I've heard all sorts of assurances, you know, that we've got time. And one of the concerns that I had, I've had, you know, coming on the select board, you know, it's a different role. You know, I, I followed town government previously. I wrote about it in Long Meadow News. Sometimes I was critical, sometimes I was not. I was trying to participate in the debate. But once you're on this board, we own these problems. Okay? Nobody else. Okay? If we, if we mess up this because we're not prepared, we own it. And whoever says that we have enough time now and we don't, in, at the end of the day, they own it. And I, I see no reason for delay. I, I, I see, I've gotten not one piece of papers from PVPC saying what they're going to do and when they're going to do it. And I hear from Richard that they were talking about it back in March? Unbelievable. And then Mark brings up their track record? Why are we delaying? So I would like to make a motion, unless you're going to, unless you say it's out of order, Murray, to hire a traffic, an expert to conduct a traffic study, and that we've been prepared to vote on it at the next meeting, on, on who we're going to have.
Is there any second to his motion?
A second for discussion.
I'd like to have you just amend it to include just only the nine-square-mile ra, area of Long Meadow.
Okay.
Specifically.
Yes. That was implicit in what I was saying.
I know that.
Yeah. By having to do with Long Meadow. Yes.
Because I think the easier the, the low hanging fruit is to do the massive traffic study. I think we all agree it's not going to, that's not it.
Right.
I'm not prepared to support the motion at this important time. I feel that there are pieces out there, and I can understand that we don't have them, which is, I want to speak with the DOT. I want to see where they are and everything. I don't want to just go out, rush out, spend money on things. I think we need to get an answer from a Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and we have to get it now. And I think they, we need to sit down and have a meeting with them. And I think we have to be talking to DOT. And DOT had promised some material to us. We never got that. And I think that we do need to make a decision on this. I think tonight is premature, but I think that I have the commitment that we need to get this done in the next few weeks. First, I would really like, I feel counsel is the number one priority. And then second, look to see if we need traffic.
Can, can you explain that, that Mass DOT was supposed to get us some information and we didn't get it? What was that, where was that promised and when was that promised?
When we went to that meeting, we, yeah, we had attended, and they said that Department of Transportation was going to look at the casino traffic reports, and they were concerned, especially, as I said, the, what's the correct word? Viaduct?
Amiibo?
Oh, the Viaduct?
The Viaduct.
Oh, Viaduct.
Yeah, the Viaduct is, is on their major projects. And this is going right into the middle of everything. And they said that they would let us know where they were standing with that. And I think that's something worth chasing down the hole before we, we go out and hire. So that's my position, and I think it's worth it. This is beginning of September, it's worth it for us to do it, it's the next week or so. And we do have a meeting on the 9th and the 16th to follow through and see where everyone does stand. Because there's a good chance there's stuff going on out there, and they just haven't communicated with it, with us. And I know I've been trying to call around and see what other people are finding out. Personally, when it comes to traffic, what I think is going to be really important is to get all the parties into the room. Whether it's Enfield, the Mass State Police, DOT should be in the room, and we should, Springfield, Agawam, all these surrounding communities, because we have a shared problem. If we block it off here, it's water, it flows somewhere else. And we need to get some coordination involved. So I think that's where, I think the important conversation will begin. So tonight, I probably wouldn't support hiring someone.
Murray, my concern is that we've been getting the delay and potential runaround for weeks, if not more than weeks. And we've got to, we've got to create a deadline that we've got to stick to. And we have not done that, because every week we'll, we'll talk to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, now we're going to talk to the DOT. If you think we're going to get surrounding towns and DOT into a room anytime soon, I think we've got another thing coming. That's not, not likely to happen. It's not in our interest to do that. And if, we can't pin our hopes on getting them or none. I think we just need to, you know, obviously, I prefer not spending our own money for a, a, a traffic study if in fact we can get the equivalent traffic study using MGM's money through the PVPC. But I'm not going to wait a whole lot longer to, to get that. I haven't heard a thing from the PVPC since the report that said they're going to do it. You know, okay, they're going to do it. Who have they, you know, we're a constituent. We pay money to the, we're their customer. MGM's not their customer. Why aren't they sending us notes once a week, twice a week? And we should be demanding it. What are they going to do? When are they going to do it? Who do they hire? Have they started? What's the status? We need a weekly status report from them. If we're not getting it, and we don't start getting it this week, then they're clearly not working on our behalf, and we ought to strike out on our own. I'm not prepared yet to say they're not working on our behalf, but clearly, if they can't communicate with us, then let's just go, go the other way. I'm willing to give the PVPC the chance to communicate with us. Maybe they're going to say we haven't asked them for it. I think we ought, we need to send them a formal letter tomorrow morning saying, here's what we want, here's when we want it. And if that's not the case, we're going to pull our money out of the PVPC to do a traffic study somewhere else.
And so the date you're looking for is the 9th or the 16th?
For what? Response from them?
No, for us to make a decision. You said you're not willing to wait much longer.
As soon as possible. The 9th is next Monday. That's fine.
Can I, wait, Richard has seen it first, but then I see you here.
Yeah, I think we're all starting to agree sooner, sooner than, than later. And, and I think to let it go past the 9th is a great, great misjustice to this one, because we, I think we're behind the eight ball very, very, very far at this point. I mean, we, so we say if we're going to get a traffic consultant at this point, we don't even know if there's one available right now. I mean, we honestly don't know because we haven't worked up that scenario. And we don't know what the surrounding communities, they may be also having a, going with the same, they may have broken away from PVPC also. My problem is more, who is going to do this?
What do you mean?
Who is going to get on the phone tomorrow? Is it going to be the town manager? Is it going to be one of these board members? Who is going to do this tomorrow? And, and if that's what's going to be done, let's put that in writing...
Okay.
And make sure this is filed through by the 9th, because we've got a lot of questions. And it's, it's getting urgent time now. I think it is too.
Okay.
I thought it was three or four months ago personally, but...
It, could I?
Yeah.
I mean, here's the thing about, I mean, this is precisely the same conversation. I mean, this feels like a debating society rather than an executive board. I mean, we're the executive branch. We're supposed to be taking action. Okay? This is precisely the same discussion that we've had before. And for me to pin my hopes on a study that I know nothing about, the people, I, I mean, PV, PVPC has not communicated anything in writing that I have seen about what they're going to do and when they're going to complete it. And we are literally less than 60 days away from the point at which we should be negotiating on the time that, that we've got. I, I actually regret not bringing this motion earlier. I think we may already be too late to be able to be negotiating when I think we should be negotiating, which is November 1st. Because like I said, if I were trying a case and it was beginning on November 1st, I would have had my experts, I would have counsel months ago.
Okay.
I think this is actually more important than any particular case because it impacts a whole town. We have, we're, we're doing this on behalf of 15,000 people. We cannot afford to get this wrong.
Okay, on the 9th, I will, a letter will go out tomorrow. We'll also book a meeting to have responded by the ninth, that meeting, exactly how far, what the timeline is, and who's been hired. And if this board's dissatisfied with that, we can go ahead with the list. And I understood that the town manager was getting together a list of who we could hire for traffic experts from, that was the last directive we gave them. And then we can go ahead and make that, if you'd be willing to wait till the next Monday.
Actually, I would like, I would like a vote on this motion.
I have a comment. Mark, I know you said you'd rather not spend the town's money. And I agree with you, if you can spend someone else's money, it's, it's a better thing. But the reality is, if, if, from what I've heard over the, the months and weeks, that what people are worried about in the impact here on this board to the town, I don't think it's an issue of, of spending money. I mean, you know, we're in a building that we spent 40 million on because it bettered the community. And I don't think there's an amount of money that we can say that, you know, geez, we, we saved 10 grand by waiting. You, you know what I mean? And, and I know you agree with that. I'm just saying that, and you can always try to present the bill back to MGM if you had to. I mean, so, I, I disagree waiting until the ninth. I, I'm at a, I'd rather offer an amendment to Alex's motion, but I'll let that pass first, but.
I'm sorry.
I said, I'd like to amend, my amendment would be that there would be a casino subcommittee of this board of two members to start to help work with the town manager to execute these issues, because it's September, I'm sorry, September 3rd. And this is what we have for, no offense, but that's what we have for casino discussion, is your, is your proclamation. So, I, I'm with you. I, so that would, my, that would be my amendment, but I'd rather let's vote on yours and, and then do that, one step at a time, because I, I, there is no more waiting. And Alex, you said something that we're responsible. There's a charter and it delineates things.
Right.
Just because there is a town manager and there's roles and duties that were assigned under the charter, it doesn't relieve us of our accountability.
Right. That's my point exactly.
Before we go ahead with this though, Stephen, you were asked to give us an update on where things are in regards to Pioneer Valley or with the traffic.
Mm-hmm.
So would you like to give that to us now, or is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Not on the Pioneer Valley issue specifically, I might do, we have several agenda items that I can go through regarding the casino, I think. In terms of the draft resolution is the item you have in front of you for that agenda item.
Yeah.
I certainly have material that I haven't distributed yet, but I have a whole folder of material here that I'm going to use to inform my presentation agenda items. I have a couple of follow-up questions though, to clarify.
Mm-hmm.
If I may?
Oh, yes.
Well, at our meeting, we talked about this, I think it was August 14th, this special meeting. We talked about who should be doing what and the town manager should be providing leadership on this issue, which I have been doing. Clearly, there's some dissatisfaction with my approach on that. I do spend a lot of time on this issue. I do talk to many stakeholders statewide. And the question I try and assess is the timeline question in virtually every conversation. Where are we in terms of timeline? To some extent, where are we compared to everybody else? Where are we compared to the global process? And the question I have is, your feelings on the timeline are not really consistent with the information I've been getting. And so I just, I must be missing something. I just want to know where that, where, this feeling that we're behind the eight ball. I mean, I know it feels like we're under a lot of pressure and we certainly are, but in terms of missing something or, you know, not be, not getting, not being able to negotiate, you know, have leverage in negotiations, to not be able to, to stand up to serve the, to, to stand up for the best interest of the residents, you're conveying, at least I'm hearing, a sense that you feel like we're, we're missing that opportunity to do all of that. That's really not consistent with what I've heard and every one I've spoken with who is working on this issue on a daily basis. So I just want to know where that is coming from.
Could I, I think maybe that's, hey, let me just ask you, I've laid out, to me, what I'm thinking about is December 31st, December 1st, November, I'm, I'm walking back from the December 1st. Maybe you could tell us how you think of, how you walk back from that date and why we've got enough time?
Well, I think certainly the, the only hard deadline is December 31st. And that is when the applications for the casino license are due to the Massachusetts Gaming Commission. That's a hard deadline. The Gaming Commission does want to see surrounding community agreements in, negotiated in, as a part, and in those application packets. I think that's their preference. The application still can be submitted without those agreements. And then that would, obviously then you'd, we'd be on a path to binding arbitration if, if the surrounding community agreement was not negotiated by that time. So backing out of that, it's really whatever dates you feel, or whatever dates, you know, basically means you have until the, the last minute to, to negotiate and do these things. Any other dates in terms of having an agreement in principle or something like that by December 1st are really internal deadlines that have been kind of, it's, it's a guideline, not a deadline. That distinction is, makes sense.
But I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, I mean, I, you, you said you've been talking, you've been thinking about the timeline a lot. I mean, to me, I mean, we, we've had this discussion, okay, you know, work backwards. Tell me, tell me when you think we need to have a traffic study done by? How long do you think a traffic study would take? How, when do you think the traffic study should be, should begin? I mean, that's what I'm getting at.
And maybe to say it in a way that, to wait, to make you feel comfortable.
Yeah.
With the timeline.
Right, yeah. That, that was my first pass at it.
No, no, but I meant with the comfortable part of, of saying, okay, there is that amount of time, because what we, what we do know is PVPC is doing a study, but we don't know their timeline. Right? You haven't heard that or anything?
Right.
Right. So they might be dead on with you, but, so maybe we're worrying about nothing.
Well, well, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, I mean, if, if you're saying we're wrong, tell us how we're wrong on this timeline. I mean, because the way I'm thinking about it is, if, that November 1st should be when we begin negotiating.
Right.
Okay. And, and, but if you don't think that's the date, walk me back in a different way. And tell me how long you think the traffic study's going to take? How long it's going to take to hire somebody? How long it is to collect the data, to write up the report, to present it to us? And tell us how we've got enough time? I mean, to the extent you've thought about it.
I would say that, I think I reported on this in a previous meeting, but I want to say I thought it was about 30 days to do the traffic study. And possibly another, you know, another 30 days tops to have it, you know, peer reviewed or do our own. I am in the process of reaching out to traffic engineers to see who's available to do one for us, so we can be prepared to do our own, if that's the course of action that the select board wants to take. I, I guess I, I would, I'm getting, the statements were made that, by most of you, that we're, we're missing the timeline and it's, it's passing us by and we're behind the eight ball. I just want to know where I should be looking for that information, because it's just not, it's just not what I'm hearing and.
But be specific. Tell us, tell, okay, I think we're at the drop dead date. I think we were probably there two weeks ago.
Why do you think that?
Tell, tell me what you think the drop dead date is. I've told you why. Because I think we've got less than 60 days to hire somebody, for the person to do the work, for the person to collect the data and to write up the report. In my business, to get an expert to do anything within 60 days is virtually breakneck speed. And we haven't even found the person, the person hasn't agreed to do it yet. Okay? That's, that's where I'm coming from. If, if you think the, tell me when the drop dead date is. If you, if you think it's different to, to hire somebody.
I think, why don't we, instead of just, no.
But he has a question.
And I want to say, let's get it down to facts. And that is, you've picked out some names of some possible traffic people. Between here and September 9th, when you contact them, ask them when they're going to be available, how soon they'd be able, and those will be your fact dates on when they'd be able to get the reports to us. What, how long it does take? We might find it only takes a week. This isn't, this isn't, what do you call it? Litigation, where it's really hard to get people to write reports for court. It might come a lot faster. We don't know. So if you could get that information by us for September 9th. The other unknown that makes people nervous on this board is, what are the dates on when DOT's going to be finished reviewing? When is the date the Pioneer Valley's going to be done? What are they doing? The scope of their work? And who are they using? And I think those are questions we can get clearly by September 9th. And we just have to chase down those questions, bring them in front of the board. If the board, after hearing the answers, still feels uncomfortable and wants to go ahead, I say we go ahead with the vote, because we won't be voting or making decisions because of being uneasy or nervous about something, but we'll have the facts ahead of us and decide which way we want to go. Because we have given it to you, but it is true, it is our responsibility in seeing that this is completed in a timely manner.
I, I think what people are hearing here is discomfort by a select board because of a lack of communications. And, and, you know, I hate to say that, but, you know, our town manager's saying he's in constant contact with people, he is in contact with people, he's got this well under control, and yet, at least there's three of us here saying, we're not sure of it, we're not comfortable. And I think Paul said it well, that, that, you know, turning this over to the town manager doesn't relieve us of our responsibility to know and see what's going on. And Stephen, I would ask you to step up the level at which you're communicating with us with what you're doing, even if it's got to be far more frequent. It, it, it will give us potentially a, a better confidence level that you've been in touch with the PVPC, they know what they're doing, they, they're on track, that you're getting lists of name, whatever it is. I think, you know, my discomfort is, I don't know. And I think I'm in a position I should know, because people are asking us questions. As, you know, the, the original topic of this discussion was how to respond to, to inquiries. And I, I know we're all getting emails from people in town about the casino, you know, going, getting back to the original issue of how do we respond? I think each person's, you know, should respond in the way they feel comfortable with, recognizing that they're responding as themselves and the board hasn't taken a position. But the fact that we're getting inquiries and our answer is, we don't know, we don't have the timeline, we don't know what we're doing for, we don't know when we're going to enter negotiation, we don't know if we've hired somebody yet, we don't even know if we've got, that's not acceptable for the select board to say we're in a position of not knowing. And we don't know the answer to any of those questions.
I haven't gotten to the reports.
But I, I understand that, Stephen, but this is, this is September 3rd and we've been asking since, since at least August 15th, and we've been asking certainly before that. And, and on August 14th, we put all this out. That's, you know, granted, it's two weeks and we haven't met routinely, but there's other ways of communicating to us that, and believe me, in those two weeks, I've gotten 15, 20 more emails about it and would like to know. And I think other, I speak for other people on the board perhaps as well. If we, if we stick to the formal meetings, then we'll either meet every night, or we're never going to get anything done in this town. I think this, this town's got to be able to run communications between our formal meetings. We cannot take formal actions, we don't take formal actions. We had a big lecture about open meeting law. But we've got to get communications going.
Okay, well, let's, the actual agenda here was, we started up there, we've jumped down to traffic consultant, we skipped hiring counsel. There are things that the town manager does need to report. And so I'd like to go through the agenda to the reporting.
But we have a motion on the floor.
And that's under traffic consultant. He, this town.
He made a motion, we had a discussion.
Okay. Then we're not going to hear the report on what he's found out about traffic consultant now?
Well, how, how is that not in our packet? I mean, if there was a report, I mean, I, I assume that we had nothing further, because it wasn't in our packet. Is there a report?
Well, I, I'm going to give you a verbal report, a status update of where we are.
I mean, okay, I mean, I have no problem listening to the, to the verbal report, but I'm not going to withdraw my motion.
Oh, I'm not asking you to withdraw it. Okay, did you, you, were able to find some, we'll go down to the traffic report, we're trying to get back to the agenda. So we're back to the traffic consultant and you were, you found some, if we are unsatisfied, that what we said to you is we're unsatisfied with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's traffic study. We want to, to be prepared to take the next step on our own.
Yes.
And so what were you able to find out about traffic study?
I have reached out to, I asked our engineering, town engineer for, for some names. I have initiated contact with some of them. Some have conflicts, because they're already working for somebody else. I am meeting with an engineering group on Friday, excuse me, to go over this. And I'm, I left messages last week and I don't know if it's because of the holiday, but I'm awaiting calls back from some of the folks. But we are getting together to develop, you know, these, these services are exempt, so you can hire someone who's, who's good fairly quickly. And just get a scope, a proposed scope of work, a timeline, a fee, that basic process. But that's, you know, it does take a little bit of time to line that thing up, line these types of things up, especially when firms, firms do have to go back. I waited on both the council side and the engineering side, I waited, or I had, I was made to wait a couple of days while they internally ran their conflict check. And that's been, and driving a lot of this. So I think, I, I have, you know, I have no problem if we want to, I've said this repeatedly, I have no problem if we want to hire our own traffic engineer and do our own study. And I think that, just to go back to a little bit of the process, there's, there's no playbook for this, for any of the towns that are in our situation. And I think this is what is, to some extent, feels so insecure about all of it. So shaky is that, there's really no, like, if you're going to litigate something, there's a certain playbook you go by and, and you do that, there's just really nothing like this. The surrounding community stuff has never been done. And a lot of it exists specifically because of the experience in Connecticut and other places. I mean, all of those experiences from those other towns informed the legislation that authorized these licenses. And, and I think in terms of, you know, communication, Mark, I, you know, I try and put together whole bits of information and present a comprehensive thing, not just send you an email summary of a one-off phone call. I, I guess it's just not, I, I don't believe that, it, for me, that's not an effective way to communicate, but I, I understand what you're saying and, and I'll, I'll try and do a better job. It just is, when I'm making a report, that's different than just a heads up. And I try and keep things together for the report, so the information has context.
So Friday, you'll be able to talk to the traffic consultant about how long it takes, as well as the scope?
Yeah.
And you, the scope, I know we had talked about when we had our August 15th meeting on, to what extent we were talking about not just Long Meadow Street, but we were talking about all egresses, egresses to town.
The, the study that's required by the secret, and we can go through this in a minute, but the study that's required by the state includes Forest Glen. I know MGM is adding Converse Street on their own. And then I know that PVPC is pushing to add much more of the town. And I think that's probably, if I had to guess, the delay is probably tied to them negotiating with MGM for a broader scope than MGM is willing to do.
Mm-hmm.
So I need to find that out. And I do, a lot of questions are raised here. I do ask them, and when I report back that there aren't answers, it's not that I didn't ask the questions. Because this has never been done before, there just aren't a lot of answers out there. And, and that's where the only thing I, one of the things I use to gauge our preparedness is, is there another town doing something totally different way out ahead of everybody else? Because I'd be looking at that saying, okay, what, what do they know that nobody else seems to? So.
So Monday, you'll be able to give us a report on at least that, what that engineering firm in regards to a scope, it might be able to nail down some of the timelines we're talking about. And I think what was emphasized when we did our, our concern and we, we did our August 14th, was that it's not just those main roads that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, but we were talking about Maple Street, we were talking about Washington Boulevard and anything coming up from Connecticut and East Long Meadow. So, you know, our own traffic person would probably be a larger, more comprehensive study, so that's something we'll want to know.
That's exactly what it relates to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Yeah. And so we, we will probably want to know that by September 9th. Did you want to go ahead with your motion now?
I did. I'd just like to raise one thing, because, you know, we're talking about timelines and that sort of thing. I mean, I guess what I'm hearing is, even as we are sitting here right now, we have no idea how long it's going to take to do this traffic study. And if we have no idea how long it's going to take to do the traffic study, how can we be confident that we are going, because that's what I want, confidence, that we're going to be prepared? Not a maybe. This is not, you, you can't go with a maybe. And, and I've said this before, if I'm wrong, that we have a little bit more time than, than I think we have, there's no harm in being prepared a little early. I don't think we are going to be prepared a little bit early, even if we, if this motion passes. But that's the thing that I don't, I don't get, is how, through all of these debates, if we have no idea how long the traffic study is going to take to complete, how could we ever have been confident about the timeline? And so to me, what that means is that we need to approve this motion now.
Um, Richard?
Yeah, the, I'm not fighting out your motion, Alex, but whether we approve it now or whether we approve it on the 9th has little bearing, because we're actively trying to get traffic engineers in. And I agree, I've been saying the same thing that you're saying, believe me. Calendar says we got 85 days, less holidays, working days, less holidays, to have this agreement issued, negotiated, and sealed, signed and delivered, or we're in binding negoti, binding mitigation with the state. And that's, that's 85 days. And if you start backing them off, the time's going to disappear very quickly. Because first of all, we don't even know what a mitigation contract, agreement even looks like. We have no idea what the format is. We have no idea who's even going to produce this document. We still haven't got that. I, I assume legal counsel will produce that document. But we haven't even had advice from legal counsel on this issue. I mean, the, the blocks are stacked up so deep on what we don't know, that, and I look at the calendar, 85 days, and I'm realistic enough with project management to know that that's tight.
Okay, so do we want to go ahead with the vote tonight?
I, I'd like to, to table the motion for, to date certain on September 9th. And, and make, and it'll be on the agenda for, for date certain, September 9th.
Can I, what does that, what does that do? Because, you know, first of all, I don't care what any other town is doing, how far ahead or behind they are of us. Quite frankly, I don't even know that unless we polled every other town, which I don't know we've done that. Okay? Okay, so if East Long Meadow might be light years ahead of it, Agawam seems to be very, very far ahead in this process. So to compare it to what else is going on in other communities is, it's, you know, apples, oranges, and donkeys, as far as I'm concerned. But tabling the motion for a week sets you back another week. And Marie, I'm talking, so, and the reason I'm saying this is because what we just heard as a report was, I made some phone calls. I've been talking, I got some names from the town engineer. Two weeks ago, we had a meeting to authorize the town manager to find legal counsel. Do you know what counsel that he's going to propose to us tonight? It's not here.
We haven't gotten to that part of the agenda yet.
Right, because we don't have it in our packet. We don't have any of this information on our hand to even review it. So to say we're going to vote on legal counsel tonight, or hiring counsel, is impossible because you're going to be voting to hire someone you don't even, you haven't even reviewed yet. My only point is that waiting one more week is, you have 85 days, you'll have 80 then. And it doesn't do, it's not going to do any good. What it does, to put a motion in place is, is to get the ball rolling from this board's perspective. Okay, because we've been waiting. And I haven't seen the answers. It might, you know, a couple of weeks ago, or three, four weeks ago, we had a discussion about letting it roll the way it was. And it hasn't gotten us any further. You know, wait in two weeks to get a resume in for a counsel where we should have had it within a few days, I would imagine. You know, because we're sitting here, we don't have those in front of us yet. But we're going to make a decision, or expected to make a decision tonight. Postponing a week does no good, Mark. I think you vote on it tonight, send a message that we want the results.
Okay, I think that if we vote tonight, or we vote Monday, we're still getting the same people together. I don't think it will bring that person on board any faster. The one thing I think it will be is if we'll vote, we're voting clearly knowing what our timelines are, what our costs are. We have no idea what scope we're looking at. So I think we'll have more information for a clear vote on Monday. So I'm supporting this, but it's really up to.
And I would have thought two weeks ago, we'd have that information by tonight. So I just think that wait in a week, you're going to be looking at it again in the same venue a week from now. That's my point. Richard's got to see him though.
Go ahead, Mark.
No, Richard.
I, this is, we're in a tough situation. We always seem to get our work ourselves in these tough situations. But if we vote tonight to go on out and get our own traffic study without knowing what Pioneer Valley is doing, I think it's a bad choice. I hate to delay this any more than anyone else in this room, but I think there are so many things right now that we can mandate that are in this, that are in this meeting room by next, by the 9th. And we'll have factual answers. And then at that point, we can roar because the difference is not going to be, there's not going to be any difference whatsoever. He's already said, traffic studies, consultants he's meeting with this Friday. So we're not going to be able to move any faster with this, whether we have this EDIC or don't. But we will be able to move faster with accurate information. That's my only point at this gesture.
I agree with Richard. I think, though, we need to clearly spell out the things we need between now and next Monday. What we need from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, what we need to have Monday, which is in advance of our meeting, a list of the, or the name of the traffic engineer, and what the scope of work is going to be, and what the cost is going to be, and what, so that when, on Monday, if we do vote for it, we know exactly what we're voting for, as opposed to saying, go hire us a traffic engineer and have them do whatever it is they do, as opposed to, and have them do the following things that we specified to do. I mean, there's no reason that we can't be writing the scope of work while we're interviewing people to, or considering people to do. And I don't know that we are, but I don't know that we're not. And I'm concerned because I would have thought that the scope of work is something that could have been done parallel to looking for people. So I think that, that, you know, if we've got all this, this in line and we set the right parameters, next Monday, we can literally turn the switch on and start running. If we vote tonight, we're still not going to turn the switch on much before Friday at the earliest. By the time, because Steve is not even going to meet with them until Friday. So it's not like we're gaining any time by voting now. And I think we're voting for not knowing what the alternatives are. But we need information on Monday. Otherwise, you know, and we're going to, you are right, we're going to be the same place Monday as we are here.
No, five days shorter.
Five days short.
Could everyone send the list of questions they want answered to either myself or Stephen? And we'll try to have all that done by Monday.
I think that should be decided right here in public on this board tonight before it goes in the list that gets compiled and puts aside and whatever. There are specific things, you want a checklist of items, correct? That's what you're talking about.
I think it's going to take more than.
I got time, I'm not doing anything else. I mean, Marie, you know, this is one of the most important things we can do this year.
That's why I'm saying for us to rush it on camera when you might sit at home and think thoroughly.
It doesn't preclude us from adding things later. But, you know, on August 14th, we sat down, we came up with a whole list of criteria to select a town council, or, you know, special council on it. And I think it was worthwhile, there were things that came out I hadn't thought of, and things that came out from the synergy of people talking to each other. And I think that, that proved the point. And, you know, certainly, you know.
So you're talking about the scope of work? We're going to decide what the scope is now?
Well, we, I mean, we already to some degree talked about the scope of work that we wanted, all the roads in Long Meadow included, just for PVPC. But I'm talking in terms of by Monday, I want to know, here's what I want to report from PVPC. I don't want, I talked to them on the phone and here's what I got. What I want is a written report, I personally want from PVPC, something in writing, signed by Tim Brennan that says, here's who we hired, here's what they're going to do, here's when they will have it. And Tim Brennan's name at the bottom of it, the buck stops with him. What I don't want is Stephen saying, I talked to somebody at the PVPC and here's what they told me. Because that doesn't hold water, that doesn't give me any assurances.
Okay.
And I want to know what we're going to walk away with. And that's just the PVPC part of it.
Okay, so if you want, there's, what other questions? Who, what, when, in writing?
Actually, could we stay on my motion? I'd like to address that. I mean, my, my issue is, you know, this was not a rash motion by any means. I began, as soon as I got on this board, I started communicating with the town manager. I talked about the need for gathering facts. I was under the impression, sort of in a general way, that we were gathering the necessary facts. I remember, we had a meeting over in the town hall. It was an executive, executive session meeting. So to me, this goes, that was like middle of July, okay? So we're a month and a half plus beyond. I mean, when I hear a report about PVPC and that they, you haven't heard from them, you're thinking about, everybody's got some input about how the study's being conducted, to me, I'm done. I mean, PVPC is not going to have a report for us by November 1st. And, I mean, I mean, how many times, you know, sort of, you know, fool me once, I mean, but fool me several meetings in a row where we have the same discussion, you know, it's shame on me. You know, and it's shame on all of us if we're not prepared. So, again, I.
Why don't we call the motion to have the vote?
I just got one more point. And Alex, to your point is that if, let's just say we vote for this and the study's done, and it concludes the same thing PVPC did, did we waste our money or did we just solidify the report of PVPC?
I don't think we've wasted the money. I mean, because we're prepared.
No, so that's my question is, even if it's the same darn numbers by two different people, it solidifies what we should go to mitigation with or negotiate with.
And then I guess the other point that I would add is, I've seen this time and again in my professional life, MGM has every incentive to slow walk this. They do not, they have no incentive to conclude the agreement with PVPC, except to run it down to the end so that people don't have the time to do their own studies. That, that's their clear incentive. And if we don't believe that, if we don't act on that assumption, we're fools. I mean.
Okay.
I would like to say just one point. Because I, and I'm getting the distinct impression that there's a feeling that, that I haven't been performing what I'm supposed to be doing in taking a lead role as I was directed at that meeting. We have been, how the approach to this issue has been based on, which was advised by town council in March. See how things unfold, see what studies are produced by MGM, and then respond to them. That was the approach that was laid out by the town council. It's basically the approach we've been doing. As I just said, it's clear that time is running out for those studies to be produced. But it's not as if I have been slow walking this issue. It has been the consensus of the board that that's how we were going to approach this. And I agree with you, time, time seems to be evaporating without, where I'm not getting the answers that we all want either. So I am doing the things, preparing to hire counsel, preparing to hire traffic engineers, things like that, because I agree with you that the timing is making it so we need to do that. But that is a change in approach from what we had previously discussed. So it's not like I've been ignoring things for weeks. We've been going along as we had all kind of agreed early on. I just, I just want to clarify that because I, because I also am responsible for this, because I'm responsible to all of you.
But if I might say, for the record, I have never voiced any support for allowing MGM to do its own studies and for us to respond to them. I think I've been consistent in that being the wrong approach.
You have, but it's been the will of the board, we all agreed on that.
Richard.
Yeah, just one last thing. I can't support your motion, but it's only because I don't see the difference between now and next Monday, based on the information that's out there. I just want you to be aware of my.
I understand. I think we're going to have the same discussion six days from now.
And I call a question.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, and we'll have that on the agenda for Monday. And Mark, you said you wanted us to delineate beyond a written report, who's doing it, what is the scope of the work, and when it's going to be done? Were there other questions you wanted to add to that now?
Is this the PVPC?
It's for Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
VHP is doing the study.
And when are they going to be done?
I don't know.
And what's going to be included? And, you know, and what's the scope of work? And who's the report go to? And who in Long Meadow are they talking to? And, I mean, there's a, and that's just the traffic study. I think that, that, you know, Monday, there's a bunch of questions we ought to be asking. But like I said, I, you know, I think as a, one of the primary constituents of this PVPC traffic study, and I understand that PVPC probably sees West Springfield as the constituent for MGM, and Springfield's the constituent for Hard Rock, and they're primary constituents, and we're somewhere down the list. I think we've got to let PVPC know that, you know, it's time to fish or cut bait here.
Okay, so these are our basic questions now. Any more questions that you want to add to that, please send them off to Stephen. And you'll compile all of those, and we'll see where we stand on them. The other thing is I want to remind everyone, everyone here should have received an email from me invited to the September 4th meeting tomorrow night in West Springfield. They're having a regional casino mitigation. Who's running this, I'm not too sure. The email came from the Springfield City Council, and when I received it, I sent it out to everybody. And I believe it's going to be in West Springfield City Hall.
I have no comprehension of what, what that meeting, I mean, does anybody know?
I'm not sure with the details. I asked who was running it, and it sounded like an attorney, so I'm not sure if it's a true regional meeting, but there might be more information. I will be attending that, anyone else who going to go to. And if you don't attend, I'll report and see if there was anything new we learned. I think we've been trying to attend all the meetings that we can see to gather information. Because the one thing is that the way the law was written and the way this is rolling out, it's a very muddy process. Very muddy, okay, so.
Marie, I'd like to also suggest by next Monday, we be prepared to hire a traffic engineer of our own, including somebody who we would hire with the scope of our study would be and what the cost of that would be. So that if in fact we're not satisfied with the answers we get from PVPC, we can act on Monday to move forward directly with that information.
I'll do the best I can, but I understand that it takes time for those places to put that stuff together. And, you know, we are.
Maybe you should have voted yes.
It would still take the same amount of time.
Yeah, because he's still going.
Whatever procurement services world where people can wave one and get instantaneous quotes.
But see, the worst case scenario is come back Monday and say the PVPC can't do it. And oh, by the way, we're not ready to hire somebody because we can't get a quote from anybody, or we can't get a scope of work. And then we're sitting back and.
Well, I'm trying to get all that stuff out now, but it.
Okay, so we will, we will find out Monday, you'll let us know. We know you will have seen one guy by Friday.
I guess my, my response would be, we ought to act like we're hiring our own person, short of signing the contract.
Right, and I'm in the process of doing that.
So that we're not really losing any time relative to if we decided to hire somebody. The other thing is I think we've got to pursue where the money's going to come from to pay for it. Paul, I agree with you, if it's the right thing to do, it's the right thing to do. But we do have to pay the bill when it comes, and it's got to come out of a line item. And whether we're going to prepare something to go to the reserve fund, to the finance committee, or we're going to find another line item to pull it out of. Even if we are to seek, and I think we ought to seek reimbursement from MGM, I think we ought to come with that prepared of where we're going to try to finance it from.
And I think that's a good segue into hiring counsel. That's a little farther up, but why don't you tell us where you've been successful and where you've run into a few problems?
Sorry, I'm just making notes.
I was going to say that pause is not a.
No.
I wasn't looking at you, so I didn't tell you before you did write.
If I don't finish writing it, I'll forget what I was saying. I circulated the RFQ for comments from the select board. I didn't receive any, so last week I sent it out with a pretty aggressive timeline for firms to respond. I did receive, and it was, you all saw it, so I don't need to go over what was in the RFQ, what we wanted. It was basically a request for qualifications, you know, a basic sense of what their experience is with casino issues, who would be working with us, and what they feel like the fee, a projection of the fee could be. I did receive three responses today, or some late last week and some today. I also did, I did hear from a few firms, some had conflicts, it took a while, back and forth with some firms. One had a conflict. Once the word was on the street that we were looking, I did hear from three other firms who I have given till the end of this week to submit a proposal. But we do have three for consideration right now. Again, my recommendation, if we want to, you know, I can certainly distribute these via email tonight, and you can all look at them. My recommendation would be give the other three firms a chance to submit proposals, and then we can send all those out, and you can review all of them at the same time. It's up to you. So we do have three in hand now, I expect possibly three more. I haven't received a commitment from them, but there's, for sure, three firms that are looking at it. I haven't received a commitment that they're going to submit. But if we want to just make a decision based on three we have, we can do that if we want, we can do that tonight. If we want to wait and give the other firms a chance to do it next week, we can do that as well.
Let's talk about process. Now, I know up till now, it's, according to the charter, we hire counsel, especially special counsel. But I think we had talked about wanting maybe Dave Martell and yourself to weed out and bring forth what your three recommendations were. Will the board feel comfortable doing that? Do they want to see all six? Do they want, do we want us to, to give our input on who we're looking at? How do we want to bring down this in a timely manner so we can get counsel on board?
Well, I'm going to answer your question about process. I guess my first question about process is, two weeks ago, a directive was given to go find counsel.
Yes.
Okay, so we have three resumes in hand, basically. Why we don't have them, that's a separate issue, and something we need to talk about as a board, that why they're not in our packet. The fact that we want to wait for three more to submit, again, do we have a timeline as to when they're going to submit it?
Is there, did you say the end of this week they were going to?
I asked them to submit as soon as possible.
Okay.
Okay, so it's somewhat open-ended. And if we're going to be waiting till Monday, because I don't have anything to base a judgment on, obviously, tonight, even if we get them in the mail tonight and so forth. And if you get them on Friday, we're going to be, hopefully you have them by Friday, that we all have them in our packet, and we can look them over in the weekend. You know, I'm hesitant to have town council there only because in his presentation to us, excuse me, back in March, he specifically said that he had no expertise in this area. And I don't know what it would add to the, to the process. I, I guess we're going to have to wait till Monday to make a decision, or at least review all these things and have a public discussion about them, as we have no other choice. I think that's what the process is, is that we should have these in our hand tonight. And whether we want to wait for the other three, I don't know. I don't know if it would, I don't know what the other three's qualifications are, if they're the best. I don't know if these three are the right ones. But, you know, I think we need to, I really do think this is something, you've got to have these for more than a weekend to look at. I truly do. You're talking about, you know, you're going to read a resume, you might know a little bit more about the legal lease, obviously, and, you know, that kind of thing. But, you know, to sit back and say, well, we'll get them on Friday and evaluate them on Monday night, or come up with a vote on Monday, I think is, is just leaving us a short time to evaluate them.
Well, that's the question. Are we taking the six, let's say there's six, and we're bringing it down to three and asking the town manager to decide, or are we asking him to bring three? What is the process we want to, this is something new, we haven't had to do this before. What is the best way to bring this together?
My opinion would be to stop with the three we have and go forward with those because we're not going to have enough time to review six.
But wait a minute, I think she, I think Marie is asking a different question of basically, who's going to decide?
Yeah. Do we want a subcommittee?
So in other words, is the town manager going to winnow and we're going to decide? Or are we going to winnow and he's going to decide? I assumed from the way you were first speaking, Marie, that, I guess as a matter of town charter, I haven't studied this myself, we have to decide.
We do the hiring, we do the hiring.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's almost like town manager. Do we, do we want to have a subcommittee? Do we want to have them bring us three?
I don't.
Do we want to interview? To what extent do we want to? And my concern, and I think what was discussed the last time we were together, is we. And my concern, and I think what was discussed the last time we were together, is we want to do this in a timely manner, but we want to do it correctly according to charter, and we want to have the best person possible. And so I'm asking, what is the will of the board and how we're going to go about this?
Could I offer my thought on that? Assuming we're the ones that are going to decide, I think it makes sense for the town manager to offer his opinion. I actually do think that Attorney Martell, having some input on his part, I mean, frankly, you know, the way you choose a lawyer is usually by reputation, and it's by people who know the work. It's, you know, it's not usually on the website. It's not going to be in the presentation that they give. You know, I'm sure all the members of the board have some familiarity with some counsel in the area, but I would think Mr. Martell, you know, he's in private practice. He's been in private practice in Springfield a long time. He's with a prominent firm. I think he'd know a lot about the reputations, and maybe even have personal experiences with them, having worked on other matters. So I think that would be the best approach, is for him to give us his opinion, town manager give us opinion, and then we decide.
Opinion or break it down to three?
And we already said that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And I guess my attitude is, if you get more resumes by Friday, we could look at them. Otherwise, we'll look at the three that we have. That's my suggestion on process.
Well, we can get, as they come in, Dave Martell and I can meet Friday, or Monday, or whenever they come in, go through them. They're not very long proposals, and as you suggest, a lot of it is not what's in the proposal, it's firm reputation, things like that. But, I mean, the proposals, most of them, you know, they're probably thirty odd pages, but a lot of it's, you know, CVs and resumes and things like that. I mean, the actual proposal for what they want to do for Long Meadow is pretty short. So I think Dave and I could get through them and give our opinions on them, and then the select board can have all of them and make a decision, filtering their read of them plus Dave's and mine opinion on the proposals.
Is everyone satisfied with that process?
The only thing, I think the applications need to come out to us now that he's got.
Okay.
I expect to see him tomorrow's emails, so we can get to looking at them. And I'm like Alex, I think Friday, if they're going to be in, I would suggest contacting the firms. They drop that date Friday, either they have to process it or it will be evaluated. And then everything else is pretty well boilerplate it.
Okay.
But I'd like to get some out now.
Sure. One of the things, and I want to get some, sorry, Mark. I want to get some feedback on that, because some people prefer to look at them all at once, because it's somewhat of a comparative valuation. And if they have looked at one and then look at one, another proposal sometime later, that's where, I want to get some guidance from the board on their preference for that. And also, the deadline to submit, which was aggressive anyway, was the packets go out before the deadline, and I apologize for not having them in the packet.
Thanks.
I agree with Richard. I'd like to get them now, and I think rather than Friday, they ought to be told Thursday at 5:00 PM, or, because Friday morning Debbie sends out the packet, and they need to be in the packet Friday. We tell people Friday they're going to be sending them in, you know, 2:00 in the afternoon, town halls closed at noon.
I'm going to adjust future deadlines.
Yeah, 5:30, that's right.
I guess, and the deadline was, I didn't even, I didn't think about the packet going out at noon. I was just thinking about giving them some time to propose. So in the future, I'll endeavor to make Thursdays the deadline for things.
All right, so we've got a process going on the hiring council. Anything you want to give us an update on the departments?
Working on the preparation of mitigation.
I do have, and I can hand it out here, I do, especially after we received the emails from constituents about the experience in the communities around Foxwoods. We did discuss that at staff meeting, and Chief Madison has put together a questionnaire that he's sending out to fire chiefs, and he got a list of names from the fire chief networks. And the police chief will use a similar form for police chiefs. And so that's to really speak to the specific questions we heard about, that the one resident had talked, discussed with the selectmen in the towns around Foxwoods. And one of the things that they recommend is possibly going down there and meeting with those communities, and also meeting with the people from Foxwoods and see how they view, you kind of get a firsthand take from them of something we're looking at. So I feel like this is a comprehensive questionnaire. I think it asks a lot. I don't know, I don't think he's received any back yet, none that he's forwarded to me, but I certainly think it asks a lot of good questions, and it's kind of frames, I think, the discussion we want to have to measure impacts.
Richard?
Yeah, did you set up a timetable for this to be completed?
I don't know if in his cover email he did. This is, he forwarded, that's a draft he sent me to review, and then he didn't copy me on the one he sent out, so.
Okay.
I think we ask for them as soon as possible.
Yeah, time might be nice. Time might. What I think that came out when we discussed on our August 14th is also building inspector and the health inspector. Maybe get some input from them. When Beverly was, the health inspector was checking our health department with Pennsylvania, they were saying that there were some impacts. And we're looking at possibly having to build up programs or build new programs, depending what those impacts are. So if you could get those department heads, I think it would be valuable.
She did submit some information. I thought I'd reported on that earlier, but I...
Yeah, you did, but I was thinking maybe they're sending these out to Connecticut. Paul?
Can I ask if we can get the final copy of what was sent and every copy that's sent by the department head? Some of these are anecdotal, and I understand that. Does your agency respond to more traffic accidents since the casino opened? And my question would be, is it because of the casino, or is it just because, you know, five bars opened up in town? You know, that, I think they're very open-ended, and I understand, and that's fine, because there's some of the questions here that says, you know, if yes, please explain, which I think is the right type of question. But I'd like to see what the final copies were, just so we have them, of what was sent out on behalf of the town.
The final draft.
The final drafts that were sent, yeah.
Any other, anything else you wanted to report on the departments?
Um, no.
Okay. And EIR?
Yes. There was some discussion at a previous meeting about what studies are being done, what's being looked at. On the flash drive I'd given all of you with a lot of background documents, there is the secretary's decision, or essentially what is the scope of work for the draft environmental impact report, which is the major environmental study that MGM is required. Hard Rock will be required to do one of these, I'm going to guess, as well, based on the thresholds. I haven't seen that report, but MGM had their environmental application form, they get comments on, and that generated this environmental impact report that they're supposed to be putting together. And it's, if you've seen it, it's a pretty lengthy document, but it's certainly, when we talk about, well, what are they studying for water and sewer and air quality and things like that? Those types of studies are required as a part of this for the state. And so I wanted to kind of reference the select board back to this document to answer some of those questions generally. And if you have questions beyond what would be required of the MEPA process, then certainly we could go in a targeted way, answer the specific questions. But a lot of the, a lot of the studies, I mean, air quality impacts in downtown Springfield are going to be more severe than in Long Meadow, and so they have to study that. Get greenhouse gas emissions, water, wastewater, storm water, you know, all of those environmental impacts are a requirement of the state, and those studies all get reviewed by the state and analyzed. And so I think this, it's a pretty comprehensive thing that they have to do. So I would encourage the select board to go back and look at it again, and see if there's, if you feel like there's gaps in this scope of work. We can certainly run that up the flagpole of the state and push for either, you know, our own consultants or, you know, find ways to get better information.
Could I pose a question?
Yeah.
I reviewed that study. My recollection was that it was pretty focused on Springfield. So I guess what I'm asking is, are you contemplating that there's going to be an environmental study that's going to focus on Long Meadow? I mean, are you saying that's going to happen? It may happen, it won't happen? I'm just trying to understand.
I think there's no, there's really no limit to the amount of money you can throw at consultants, and no limit on the number and type of consultants you can hire to do work. I think for air quality, I don't know, to me, it seems like the air quality issues would impact Springfield more directly, because that's where the activity is, the construction, you know, noise, dust, those types of things are all really heavily impacted on Springfield. And if the studies of those impacts show that they are at a high level, that's one where I would say that maybe we should get our own study done, because they're clearly at a threshold that may impact us as well. We could certainly go out and have somebody do their best guess on the impacts of us. I don't know if that would be money well spent. I mean, traffic, those types of things that are more tangible and more commonly studied. I think we're already taking the right approach.
No, I understand. I'm not necessarily suggesting that we do hire an expert to study. I'm just trying to understand, as it stands now, is that study what we've got with respect to environmental impacts at this point? And are we expecting anything else by anybody?
Well, this is what the state is requiring, this is what the state is requiring them to look at as a part of their process.
So they're done with that?
I don't know that they're done with this. I don't, in fact, I don't think they are.
And I think if we look at it, like sooner rather than later, if we have specific concerns or questions that we feel the scope needs to be expanded, or we need to hire, we feel this is something that we need to consider hiring our own experts. Maybe we're going to be worried about the drainage and how much is being discharged in the Connecticut River and how that's going to affect. So maybe everyone should look at the EIR scope of work one more time and say, is there something else we might be wanting to look at?
Water and wastewater are addressed very specifically in here, and that's one that has come up. And that's one, you know, the impact to Springfield is the same as the impact of Long Meadow, because we buy our water and we purchase our sewer capacity from them. So upgrades to mains, upgrades to pump stations, you know, things that would have cost triggers for us will be yielded through this process.
Yeah, so I would, I'm going to go back and reread that, so we might have a more open discussion. Richard?
Yeah, NEPA, NEPA, as Stephen was saying, NEPA only pertains to where the facility's being built. That's part of the studies, but they don't go on all over the place. But we could certainly get a consultant to do it, but I don't, I wouldn't see much value in it personally, unless they've identified something very, very unique in that study.
I think it, go ahead.
I guess, Stephen, one of my questions and concerns is, you know, I understand this EIR is going to take a look at, and I'm just going to pick one example, Bondi's Island wastewater treatment, you know. But where it affects Long Meadow, I think, is if Bondi's Island is, capacity is either exceeded or is marginally exceeded, or causes additional days when Bondi's Island has problems as they used to have, and days gone by when the odor was so bad, you couldn't live in Long Meadow even. And how do we look at issues that may say, you know, well, Bondi's Island needs more capacity, where's that fault? Do they assess all their communities? Do they, are they agreeing that they would assess the casino alone? You know, how do we look from this EIR into the impact that some of these things that may be secondary to us have, will have on Long Meadow? And Bondi's Island, you know, and you can use Cabo Mountain Reservoir again, too. Water coming in there. If all of a sudden there's not enough water to go around, you know, is that going to impact Long Meadow? What do we need? How does that impact Long Meadow?
I've read those paragraphs here. I'd encourage you to do that, because essentially, the question, how do they get those answers isn't here. The impact on those, whatever those answers turn out to be, I have not personally read the agreements between Long Meadow and Springfield for water and sewer, but I'm pretty confident, based on my discussion on Mike Rabel, that those types of issues are set forth in those agreements.
Yeah. And that's... So let's look at the EIRs before next, if everyone could try to sit down and read those. And of course, other interesting reading is the agreement between MGM and Springfield that is available also.
One other comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mark, back to your point, in that whole study, they take what the max operating is at the facilities now, so it would cover us, too. If they said that the plant was deficient, it's deficient for us also, because we're an inflow into the plant.
Interestingly, they're...
It's not deficient now, but it might be when you add in the outfall from a casino.
They're below, those numbers are in here.
Right, and I've read that.
That would be...
They're below capacity, and I don't think this will put them above capacity.
But that would have to be fixed for them to move forward, unless we plan some massive development. Now, if we had a massive development planned that they're unaware of, then that could be very pertinent to this discussion. That would be something that you'd want to, but we don't have anything.
But they're, I mean, basically, they have to do better projections than the state says, your projections on sewer discharge are based on this, we think it's higher, or whatever. Because right now, it's, they have about a million gallons per day capacity for sewer, and they're only, MGM is suggesting there are a quarter of a million additional, so well within what they can handle.
But, I mean, another example is, will the trash generated by a casino cause an increase in dumping fees in western Massachusetts, you know, because of supply and demand? And therefore, our trash disposal costs will go up. You know, that's the kind of thing that...
They do have to propose mitigation measures as a part of something.
Right, but that's, it's different from mitigation versus what does it do economically in Long Meadow.
Do we want to get our own study of that?
Well, I'm not sure we want to, but I'm just saying that when we go to things like mitigation, we have to consider things like that.
Well, I think we listed that on our concerns, and the question is, on the EIR report reviewing that, what other studies are we going to ask for? Maybe we're not going to need it, we're satisfied, but I'm hoping that will just sort of jog that and we'll make decisions, because we might not want to stop at the traffic. Or we might decide after reading that we can stop at the traffic and not get worried about other things.
My concern, Marie, is that the process isn't going to be that the casinos that we are negotiating would say, okay, list all your items and the dollar impact. What they're likely to say is, here's how much money we're offering you. You know, you split it up any way you want to and account for it any way you want to. And that's my concern about, you know, dotting every i and crossing every t, you know, now we may say no and go into an arbitration process with much different numbers. And I think that's where we need our numbers for. I don't think our detailed numbers are going to help us a whole lot in our discussions with them, but they would in arbitration.
Okay. Well, I think we have a lot of work to do before Monday. So let's move on to the DPW.
Can I just ask one question about casinos? I said I was going to offer an amendment to Alex's motion, and...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't do that.
I really like to offer a motion that we have a casino subcommittee of the board of two people to work with the town manager to address concerns like what Mark has in terms of, here's the timelines, here's the expectations. I think it would increase the flow of communication to the select board. It's an official subcommittee, so they have to post meetings, but I would make a motion that we establish a casino subcommittee of two board members to act on behalf of the board.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second for discussion.
Okay, discussion. Now, I know we had talked about that before, and we backed off from it, and the last time we had the meeting, August 14th, we said Stephen was going to be in charge of it. The one disadvantage I remember, I think, was the fact that we were posting meetings, we were posting minutes, and the issue is, are we also, you know, publicizing our negotiation strategies?
The committee could meet in executive session, too, if they get to negotiating strategies. I mean, all public committees can do that.
And I think the question is, we've been having trouble with, so that's my concern about having the subcommittee, is when is it executive material, when it's not, open meeting law, all of that. And we need to...
It's garnered by talking to counsel and asking them what, you know, if this is a meeting, if it's executive session or not. I mean, I think the town council at our open meeting law presentation made it very clear that there's very few things that meet the threshold of executive session.
Exactly. And when we were even discussing the casino specifically, and even the qualifications to hire an attorney, I know we had to leave that in open session. So that, my other concern, is to be able, how often, to make sure these people, we need to move fast, and are we going to have trouble getting this group to meet at a regular basis? So those are my only concerns. Does anyone else have any positives or negatives in regards to forming the subcommittee?
I guess I have a general issue about subcommittees. Um, I, for as much, I don't know, contentiousness as exists during our meetings, I actually like it. I like the open discussion, I like how everybody gets to participate on an equal basis. I would hate for us to sort of start going in the direction of the school committee, the way they, all due respect, I'm sure it works for them, but one of the things that I've noticed is that the formal meetings that people see are very, are sometimes perfunctory affairs, because what they're doing is they're adopting the work that's been done in a subcommittee, and, you know, heaven help, you know, town residents to try to go attend these subcommittee meetings. I mean, that, that is more engagement than I think you can expect from citizens. So I think it's a less open process, and I guess the other thing is, this is a uniquely important issue, and I think we all, you know, need to be part of it now, and not be sort of handed off to two particular people. So that's, that's kind of the issue that I have.
And any other comments, Mark?
Yeah, I'm kind of torn, but in some ways, I think I support the subcommittee only because I think we need to, I think, I think we need to communicate better with our town manager, and we haven't done it in our current form. And I think this will provide a format for that communications. I think, you know, I think Stephen's got a way of doing things that, that works well for him, and, and we have a way of doing things that works well for us, and we've got to get that more in tune on this, on this topic. And I'm not looking at a subcommittee to slow it down, but rather as a means of, of enhancing that, that communication. If I thought that we could do that in another way, that'd be fine. I'm not even sure we need a subcommittee. I'd, I'd even go for, I don't know what the right word would be, a single person as a liaison with the, with the town manager or something to, maybe that's really what I'm looking for, because I, you know, but I think we need to make sure that the, the communication is stepped up a notch, because I just feel that I haven't, you know, I, we haven't been getting the timeliness of communications. You know, maybe subcommittee's the wrong thing, maybe liaison's the right thing, but either way, I think we need to do something.
Perhaps we could, sorry, go ahead.
Paul?
I understand your point. I'm the person who vote, who made a motion to get rid of the subcommittee with the select board. I think this is a singular purpose, though, and it's, it's an important purpose, and, you know, Mark kind of brushed it. I'm looking for it to speed things up, not, not slow them down, and to make sure that what's discussed here is actually followed through, followed through on. So it's not to do the work of five, because I believe in a group like this, we should all be doing, doing the work. And, you know, two people shouldn't do the work, especially when it doesn't, let's see, it's not, the recommendation isn't accepted by the board either. So I'm really looking at it, and, you know, you said liaison, I'm looking at it as a way to push things through, because we just talked about some things that possibly have by Monday. Well, this would be the group that I would hope to execute, to help execute things that have them by Monday. And that way, there's two people that are representing the board, because quite frankly, we're ill-prepared at tonight's meeting to talk about the things we were supposed to talk about. That information wasn't in our hands, and that's what I would look for the subcommittee to do, to ensure that that information is delivered to this board, because we all know the information we're looking for. And I, that's what I'm, that's why I made the motion. I'm not in favor of subcommittees, because, for exactly the points that you made, but this is a very specific issue that I think it needs to be addressed in that way.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'm in favor of it. I, I think there's too many pieces in the puzzle. I really, I think, I think this, this is an operation with a more minds you've got collectively thinking about this and working on it, even making the phone calls and gathering documents that are up to going to be. I think there's a lot of different pieces that need to be followed up on this.
Okay, any other discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. And who's going to be on the subcommittee?
I said, I made the motion for the people here.
I second it.
Then, then they get to be on the subcommittee, as far as I'm concerned.
There you go. I've done it to you.
I only have one seat in my office, we'll have to add another one, an extra chair.
They're open meetings, you've got to hold them somewhere between, inside your office, in someplace that's handicap accessible. I mean, that's the way it is. The problem is, we've got to post them 48 hours in advance, too. You know, the downside of this subcommittee is, is I don't, I'd ask Stephen not to lean on the subcommittee, because if we wait now, we've got a, well, we couldn't get a subcommittee meeting, we didn't get the, I hear you, I know.
Hold on now. You need a subcommittee, which, if we're going to be honest, is to watch me, because you don't feel satisfied with the, even though 95% of the answers we're looking for are beyond my control, beyond the town's control, and really beyond a lot of people's control at this point, because I haven't delivered all of those things that are beyond my control, you want to have a subcommittee keep eyes on me, I am totally fine with that. Because I, I love the fact that two other people are going to be as uncertain and frustrated with the process as I am. I welcome that. But we can't have it both ways. We can't have it be, we need to have these open meetings and this regular communication. I, I would, I would ask what the definition of timeliness is for communication, if we feel like adding a committee is intended to streamline that. And I, and I guess, and we've gone back and forth on this a lot, and clearly, I'm not a very smart person, because I just fail to see how collecting information, you know, Thursday, Friday, late Thursday, Friday during the day, and then presenting it at the next workday that we have, isn't timely communication, Mark. And it's, and Paul, we can criticize every single process we do, and, and that's totally fine, too, but there are certain logistical realities to what we're doing, and I'm pushing this as hard as I possibly can. I want the answers, and I want to deliver good results to the select board, every bit as much as you want me to, probably more so. So I guess, to say that the two persons that are going to, I mean, we're going to meet every morning for coffee and have an open meeting and see what happens every day, I mean-
Sarcasm aside, I was on the finance subcommittee, and I can tell you that it actually helped perform, perform work with the town manager. We sat down with the town manager and CFO and talked about the budget, and then the subcommittee brought it before the board and talked about the things we talked about in those meetings. So, you know, it's, and we didn't do it to babysit the town manager, we did it to expedite things, to talk about things that you don't, you don't have the time to do every two weeks. Two weeks ago, we gave a directive to have town council. So my question to you, Stephen, is on Monday night, you had a directive from the board that said, go find town council. When did you go about looking for that? Was it Tuesday morning, Wednesday morning, Thursday morning, Friday morning? When was it?
What day did I send the RFQ out for your comments? Was that a couple of days after that?
Well, you know, there's, my concern is the way that, I voted for the subcommittee because I felt that people wanted to have more inclusion in the process, and to see how the process was going on, because there's, people are uncomfortable with the process. I think that it's not a matter of babysitting. My concern, though, is that one of the things that we need to do is, we need to move this along quickly. When is the first subcommittee meeting going to be? It's not going to be probably till after the Monday meeting, so we'll have to assess what the first directive to the subcommittee will be, because on Monday, we'll have a better idea. What subcommittee could be doing is, one of the things is reading the host agreements for Everett, the host agreement for Springfield, get a feeling of, of what's out there, go through the EIR. But that's something we all should be doing, too, and we all should be doing to prepare as we go into negotiations. So, you know, I'm not sure how much the group, the subcommittee can do. I don't think it's, it's harmful, it's a way of opening communications a little bit more than, you know, two people. I guess I am a little concerned that I was involved with, from the very beginning, on the casino mitigation from last December. I sat down with Tim Brennan, and two new members are coming in and stepping into it, and that's fine, because more people are involved, but there are things we need to do very quickly in the next week. And I think that the subcommittee can meet maybe after next Monday and decide how things are going and recommendations, but when it comes to actual directives, we're all going to have to do it together. So we'll have to feel out how the subcommittee's going. But I hope it just doesn't become sitting down and criticizing on a weekly basis, okay? And it really is listening, seeing where the problems are, and then bringing, having more people being able to discuss it as the select board, and moving forward on directives from this group. Because one of the things I did do once I became chair is, we put casinos on every single agenda from here on. And we've, it's something, as Alex said, it gets ugly, but we've got to work it out, and we have to talk it out. I think there's, we've got to press on Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and we've got to get the answers out of them. The answers might not be there, and I don't want this to become increased contention. I'm hoping the subcommittee will decrease concerns and worries. So that's my only, I voted for it, but that's only my, my concern going forward. How, how fast it's going to go, and if it's really going to be productive. So let's follow it as we go each week and see where the subcommittee goes. And again, we've got to post 48 hours, and unfortunately, most of those meetings are going to have to be open meeting. They can't, very few can be executive.
I'm not looking for secrecy.
Okay.
Most of the reporting, most of the reporting won't change, if this is something that calls for executive session, it should be done by the whole board.
Okay, all right. Any other comments on casinos before we move forward?
Yeah, just a quick one. I'd love to serve on the committee, but I'm going to be gone for three solid weeks, and so I think that would be-
You got the executive compensation package.
Yeah, I got the good package. And I think it's three, I think it's three very critical weeks in this process.
Okay.
But I'd love to serve on it, but I, you know, I, three, being gone three weeks is too long a period of time.
Mm-hmm.
Good for you.
Marie, I let, I let Marie and Paul do it, Marie, for continuity. Seriously, Marie, for continuity, I don't, I don't know what else.
That's fine.
So we will, we will work on our first meeting, okay? All right, so moving right along to DPW complex, I think, following what Paul had suggested before, when we were talking about something, we should start with, make sure the whole board is on step one, step two, and so the question is, should we have a vote on whether we need a new DPW complex? And we're not talking about where it's going to be built, or how much we're spending, I mean, is this still the priority issue? It's been there for a couple of years as our goals, and do we still have that?
I think, I, I think we're, we're in a different position. I think the first step we've got to do is, is have some kind of a discussion on, on, you know, what we need to do, and then we decide how we best go about doing that. Because I suspect that there ought to be a discussion about renovation versus replacement. And I know we went through that at the presentation with Ty and Bond, and I know we've gone through this before, but I still think we need to have that discussion, so that publicly, people hear that it was A, considered, and B, what the outcome of that consideration was on, on a, you know, a total, you know, and it may be a rebuild in place. I don't know what, you know, renovation can be everything from, you know, paint a couple of walls to, you know, systematically tear it down on one end and rebuild it as you move along the other thing, or find out that we're moving because you can't do it there, or it's not cost-effective to do it there. But I think that's the discussion we ought to have of, you know, A, do we need to do something, and B, what extent do we need to do it, and C, then how do we do it?
I guess the first question that I must have, is vote for a new DPW. The second was renovate current site or build a new site. So I was saying, do we need to build a new or renovate? So it's, the question is, is this going to be a goal of this board to do something about the DPW site? And I was looking for-
I mean, like, for this year?
For this year.
I don't know if we necessarily need to do something this year, other than set a course of action. If the course of action is to build a new DPW somewhere else, that's not going to be done this year. But to set that course of action and agree upon it, I think, maybe.
Well, Marie, I have two thoughts on this, and I'm very much undecided on it. I'm, I'm still thinking about it and getting up to speed on this issue. It strikes, but here are my two thoughts. First is, it's a huge issue, because it's a huge amount of money, and as far as I can tell, we're not going to get the state to help pay for it. The way I was hearing the presentation on that Saturday, we could be upwards of $20 million if we go somewhere else. That's, you know, so to me, what that suggests is, that's not just the five of us making a decision, it's, it's really a matter of how, if it is a goal of the board, how do you build the political consensus to make it happen? When we had the new high school, there was a lot of groundwork that was done, there was a lot of political organizing to get it, to get the override passed. I think you would have to have that level of engagement with the voters. So I, so to me, it's not just about what the select board wants to do, assuming we want to do something. And then the second thing, I, is really more of a question. I under, this is before I moved to town. I understand that there was a vote at a town meeting, I believe in the mid 2000s, if I'm getting this right, where the DP, a new or renovated DPW site was voted down. I was just wondering if somebody, Mark is-
Well, I don't remember that.
No? That doesn't, that doesn't ring a bell?
There was something to that effect. I don't know exactly, I mean, yeah, it was something, but I don't know exactly what it pertained to, but it was at a town meeting. And I don't know if it was, I think it may have pertained to a study for a new DPW site.
Oh, okay.
I think that's what it may have, may have been.
I guess, I guess what I was getting at is, you know, I think it would behoove us to think about that experience. My, what I heard was that DPW site, maybe it was a study, that it was voted down, and what does that tell us about, you know, the community's willingness to put some serious dollars into renovating or replacing it? I, I mean, I just think that's something that we had to think about, maybe somebody who was on the board at the time could talk to us about that. That's something that I'd be very interested in knowing more about.
Any other comments?
You know, even before the tour, I've, I've been down there, when you go to the dump on a Saturday, sometimes the gates open and I trespass and go look around and stuff, and, you know, I, I haven't even caught you yet, so that's, I, I think that, I think the board needs to lead on this and say that, and make it a capital project, just as we would, you know, replacing a sewer line on Merryweather and, or wherever. I think that we, we really need to take the lead on it. Whether we, I think if we take the word new, and really put in there a vote to, for a DPW facility exploratory committee, which we had a search, not a search, a site committee, I'm sorry, a site committee, which is different than saying voting for the, you know, because I think it'd be better if we actually had that site and say, here's where we like to do it, it's reasonable, it has this less impact to town residents, and to Alex's point, there's, there's some of your backfill into, into that. I, but I think that's what, I'd like to see us, you know, head down that road, that we tackle this as we would, and it's in that list of projects, and I, you know, I, Mark Borowski was on the committee when we were talking about, you know, putting DPW on as a capital project, and he, I think his words were something to the effect of, I don't know, is that really the highest priority of capital projects? And I think it needs to be ranked in there as well. So if replacing the four-inch water mains are more, and I mean that, you know, if they are more important than the facility, then that should take the priority, but if we say, well, to do that work, we need this, then that facility should take priority. So I think if we take off the words vote need new, because, because one of the things could be renovate what you have down there.
Right, that's, yeah, Mark said new slash revenue, or do you feel we need to just go down to item four and ask for the site selection committee to be brought together again? But I thought we needed, I thought we had had a commitment for several years that we were going to do something about the DPW complex.
No, absolutely.
And so that's why I thought, do we need a recommitment from this board before we take the first step, which would probably be site selection committee, bring that, revive that. And do you feel we need to make that first vote, or should we just, as Paul said, go for an actual, have a site, have a plan, and build consensus on it? Mark?
I think, first of all, we've got to publicly agree, or not, that we need to do something with the DPW facility in sight. And, and that's a major step, because up until now, we've talked about rebuilding the DPW in the most general of terms, as opposed to, we need to improve the storage facility for our vehicles, we need to improve our ability to do maintenance on our vehicles, we need the ability to have a reasonable, you know, town engineering facility that can, can oversee the capital projects that we're starting to do, we need, you know, whatever those elements are, you know, we can pick them off. Now, whether we put them all in one site, we talked about that when we took the tour or not, but if we agree that we need to do those, then we said, then, and there has been no agreement on that.
Yeah.
But if we agree that we need to do those, the next step is to then go about and say, okay, what's the best way to do each one? And that's when you weigh Ty and Bond saying, well, to renovate the site, you know, we have the main sewer line for the entire town of Long Meadow that goes right through there, it's this 36-inch sewer line, and it's going to cost us $1 million to move that thing, you know, 25 feet that you're going to need to do to put in a foundation, well, gee, maybe you, you don't want to build there, or any of those considerations. But that may be just one of those elements. You know, maybe we say, what we really need is a maintenance facility, and we need a storage facility, and maybe we can do that there, I don't know. storage facility, and maybe we can do that there, I don't know.
So we still...
So I think we, I think we've gotta agree, and I agree with Paul, we ought to lead, but I think we ought to systematically say, you know, I hate to say it, but do we buy the premise of the tie-in bond report, that, that said we needed to renovate, or do something about it? Because the site selection committee that's, that acted two and a half or three years ago, worked with the assumption that that report was valid and sacrosanct. And now we're going back and saying, do we wanna make that assumption? Do we, do we wanna buy into the fact that, A) we need to do something, what do we wanna do, and to extent we wanna do it?
Then can we look for a vote tonight, that we're committed to having a new or renovated DPW facility, and then the next meeting, we will break down the various concerns, and then start talking about one site or multiple sites?
This is, I mean, we discussed this at the last meeting, a little bit, and to me, you know, I would be asking the question that Paul posed, which is, is there something more important? And this is why I discussed at the last meeting, and I think maybe you were supportive, my recollection and my notes, when I drafted the minutes, were you supportive of a joint capital planning committee? So we can look at, because I think if we do a twenty-million-dollar DPW site, that's gonna displace a lot of other priorities in town. I wanna know what we're displacing, before we take a big step like that. And, you know, to do it in a vacuum, especially, you know, where Richard is, you know, you've, you've written about this, you know, about a hundred and fifty million, three hundred million dollars worth of capital needs, and, and I would wanna understand that a lot better, before I say, yes, you know, DPW site is our number-one capital project. Because one of the things that I've noticed, over the last few years, we've had a little bit of a hangover from the high school. You know, we voted for it, but it's impacted the discussion that we've had about what we can do as a community. And so, you know, if we do something like this, it's, we're gonna have a similar sort of displacement. So I, before we take a vote like that, I would prefer to see what else we're looking at, and I would love to do it in the context of a joint capital planning committee.
Mark?
Yeah, Alex, I, I hear you, and I, I see a lot of value in what you just said. I wanna give you though, that, my opinion that the DPW, or a new DPW, or renovated DPW facility will never make the cut. And it will never make the cut, even though it ought to, because it's not sexy, it's not jazzy, and it has no direct impact. I'm gonna use an analogy, back when I was working as an engineer somewhere, I had a, a project to install, literally, install a pump, a fifty-horsepower pump, okay? And, and this project that probably would've cost, you know, seven or eight hundred dollars at the time. The problem was, to put in that pump, there wasn't enough electricity, we needed another electrical substation. That pump ended up costing a quarter of a million dollars. And it wasn't very necessary, but how do you justify paying for, now, I could've put in, you know, one more transformer to drive the pump, but we ended up spending a quarter of a million dollars to put in an electrical substation, because that was the next increment. At what point do we go back and say, fundamentally, a DPW is an, is an important part of the infrastructure of this town, to some degree, every bit as important as our, as our schools, as our town hall, because we do so much out of that facility? And to have a second-rate or poor facility, it generates second-rate and poor performance out of our DPW. Now, I don't know that that's the case, I don't know it's not the case, but I will tell you for sure, that whether it's the capital planning committee or us, when we're ranking, do we replace the sewer this year, or do we replace a, a garage, the sewer will always win. Do we replace a, a water system, or even repaint, the capital project will always win. And, and that's unfortunate, and we need a way to say, that fundamentally, infrastructure of this town that is not directly related to somebody flushing their toilets, or watering their lawns, needs to get, get some, get some support. That's one of the reasons that we were all down there, to look at that place. I think, you know, I, I had some concerns about the, the tour and the open house and all that stuff, but there's no question, it's deplorable. You know, we have limped along for the last fifteen years. Now, why we've limped along, I would ask, and subject to a lot of question, too. I mean, one of the first things I'm gonna say is, why haven't we been submitting, just like, just like I did when the schools came along? Why haven't we been pouring money into the schools for twenty years, and we let it get to the point where we had to replace the high school? Why haven't we been putting money into the DPW? The fact is, we haven't. You know, it's now the condition that we've gotta do something. It is something that needs to be sold to the people in town, I think it's a, it's an aggressive and difficult sale. I think it behooves us to not build a Taj Mahal, but if it takes, you know, the numbers I heard were twelve to fifteen million dollars, maybe it is twenty million dollars, I'm hoping it's not. But, you know, but maybe we can, can do something less expensive, but I think we've, it'll, it will never win in a head-to-head evaluation versus other capital projects, and that's my concern.
I think there's been a lot of complaints, just about operations, DPW, and what we expect out of them, that we want them to be twenty-first century, we want them to be top-notch, you can't do it in a nineteen-twenty-nine facility. I have no intention of moving this town towards a twenty-million-dollar project, that's a small children's hospital, as my husband said, twenty million. But I think something's got to be done. We have to take the first step, but that needs a commitment of the board, and that's why I asked for the vote, whether it's broken up, how much we're gonna do, what needs to be done, he's broken up into functions, are we gonna face that all in functions, how much we're gonna deliberate and, and make decisions? It's a lot of decisions, but this is just like the first step, are we willing to take that first step? Richard?
You can't not take the first step. It's past that point. It's like everything else we've got, it's like Mark said, you cannot deny it any longer. It's been denied for a good twenty years. It's a stepchild, it's out of view, out of sight. It's like the analogy with the toilet again, okay?
I don't think you wanna do that on camera, Richard.
Nobody, nobody ever goes down there unless they have to, okay? There's major problems with the facility, there's major problems with some of the operational procedures in there, some of them are controlled by the facility, and some are controlled by the way the facility is being used. It's not a question of whether we need a new facility. It's not a question that, that is aged out, it's gone. It's a question of, do we build it there, do we modify it, and to what degree do we do? I think Mark is tiptoeing on the same thing that I'm tiptoeing on. You hate to say another study group, but, you know, Mark handled the last one, and they basically come up and, the recommendations were to move it on out of there. There are a couple more considerations, do you have to have it all sitting there? Mike would love it. Everybody wants everybody home so they can touch 'em on the head, but it doesn't need to be that way. The engineering groups can work very independent, that engineering group could actually be in another country, as long as we had ways of communicating, sending them pictures. And they had ways of doing their work. And I'm not being sarcastic, but I mean, some of those functions do not have to be attached to the mothership to function fairly well. But yes, I would support moving forward. We have got to at least embrace what we're going to do, and start moving in a positive direction. Agree with Alex's point, it's gonna take a little time to sell it. I also agree with Mark's point, it will never, ever be a higher priority than a replacement of sewage main. It's impossible for it to be higher than that. But once all the sewage mains are replaced, then yes, it will be the number-one high priority. Eventually, that complex will get to number-one priority in this town, at least we would hope it would, if our organization is run properly, and that we're doing proper repairs. Site selection, a lot of it rests there. If there's no land available, then it's answered the question, very quickly. It says, we are forced to go back down there, and then we set our battle plan on how do we set it up. So I, I think, if, if the site, the site committee doesn't come back with something, then I think you got a lot of answers out of the way.
So do I hear a motion for, oh, I'm sorry, Paul?
I would make a motion to the, the select board, I'm gonna word it a little bit differently, that prioritize the DPW facility as the primary capital project in front of the town.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
One little discussion item, that before this school came on the horizon, the DPW facility was the number-one capital project in town. When the MSBA came out and changed the rules, and, you know, there was a moratorium and so forth, so prior to the MSBA opening up the, the gates again for projects, the DPW facility was number-one, and it was bumped purposely for this building to get built. So that's why I think, if we make it the priority, then the other things fall into place on the agenda.
All right, so any other discussion on that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I just, I think the issue, because the motion is primary capital project, will also come down to how do you pay for it? And I, I wanna remind people of the pain, but yet the, it was painful, but it was in novel way, that we bought, built a new fire station, you know, and expanded the, the police department complex. You know, and we did that by essentially bonding for it, and paying for it out of our, our annual capital appropriation. I was the chair of the capital planning committee, when we, when we felt the burden of that, by not having capital for, for many, many years. But in fact, I think there are potential payment schemes that may include a, a combination of bonding, plus using some money out of our capital, or whatever it is, that, that may make this appropriate, to make this the primary capital project in the town. And, and the other thing is that I think, and we spoke about this at our, a meeting the other day, when we were having, talking, talking about priorities for the, or, or goals for the town, we talked about moving maintenance out of capital. If we actually can do maintenance out of maintenance, that will reduce the, the burden on our capital, you know, our, our capital budget every year, so that we can actually do capital projects. And, and I believe that this is amongst the most important ones we can have.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. What about the site selection committee? Should we revive that committee?
I'd like the, the one right before that, contract operational facilities consultant. I think one of the things that we need, especially for that department, is to really look at our, the functionality of it, is, you know, we're, and we've been in a mode of buying these bigger trucks to, you know, the reason being, we gotta plow the streets better and so forth, and, and that's one of the reasons why the trucks don't fit in the garages. I mean, you know, they're bigger than what we had previously, so I'd like to, I'd like to have us talk a little bit about, you know, something, having a consulting committee to talk about our DPW, is it...
Is that a motion?
I, if, I'll make it a motion, so we can talk about it.
Right, second?
Second.
Okay, um, now you can talk about it.
Yeah, my, my concern is that, you know, the, the town has stayed nine square miles, but maintenance issues, and, I mean, you know, the, under the charter, DPW took in field maintenance, which they never had to do before.
Right.
And so, you know, they lost a lot of space down there, just to house that equipment, for example. Parking wreck, which used to do the parks, the schools did the schools, those were all separate, and theoretically, we saved money by merging them together. God only knows if that happened, but it also, DPW only inherited one employee to do all of the maintenance for the schools and the fields, school fields. So I think we need to figure out, A) is it properly staffed, understaffed, or overstaffed? Do we have too much equipment, not enough equipment? Is it the right equipment? And I think that will lead to part, and if you do that in conjunction of, when we come down to a site selection committee, you know, they could come back and say, well, you need four more trucks, or you need four less trucks. Well, that makes a little difference in terms of size of our facility. Or you need ten more employees, or ten fewer employees. And I, I don't think we have a handle on that, in a sense of, because this was all kinda thrown together, and quite frankly, in the early days of, after the charter, some of you may recall, it wasn't the, probably the most pleasant discussions DPW had with, between the schools and the town, because it was running around trying to take care of everything. So I don't know if we've ever had, had, had been able to take a breath, after the charter merged all this stuff together, and said, are we, are we the right size? Because, you know, we had a, a vehicle study, and it came back and showed us certain things, but I think we need a, a study of the whole thing to say, is it the right, for what, and part of this is, is not just for nine square miles, but what the demands from the town are.
Yep, from our type of town.
Right.
Richard?
Yeah, Paul's on, on track, this time.
Every once in a while.
Yeah, every once in a while. And we need a total operational evaluation, and, and it even goes further than what Paul was saying, it looks into the work methods, the, the returns that we're getting for our, our inputs, it also looks at even the consolidation issues, they would make recommendations, does this department belong there, is that the best location for them? So there'd be a lot of things come back out of that study. And I think I've shared the, the study with Andover, with the, with the town manager, there, there are very beneficial studies. But I, I don't, I don't think we can move forward without it, I think we have to do a study.
Alex?
I would agree with this. I mean, one of the hesitations that I've had, and again, on the DPW facility, I think you potentially could have more payoff in the performance of DPW in an operational review, than building a new building. And so that's one of the things that I'm, you know, I mean, are we as efficient as we can be? You know, are we evaluating employees at the DPW, you know, as we should be? I mean, I mean, these are all things that, to me, you know, and if we can be, and, and it strikes me that for a relatively small investment, you could have big payoffs in, in improving how DPW functions.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, I think one of my concerns of the DPW is, is the, the structure of the, of the personnel and, and team there. You know, prior to the, the site consolidation, we had Mike Rabel and, and a couple of people reporting to him. We added in all the grounds, and all building maintenance, and we still have Mike Rabel, and, and a couple extra people reporting to him. And, and, you know, the question is, it, it looks good on paper, but i- is that the right structure? I mean, is that a job one person can do, given the, the requirements of, of building maintenance, you know, grounds maintenance, you know, and roads, streets, water, sewer, and all that kinda stuff? With, with the very few levels of management, we, we have everybody, a couple of supervisors, and Mike Rabel. This is not a, what I call a, a, a very bureaucratic organization, and, you know, Mike manages up, and Mike manages down. And, and so I, I think we ought to also look at the structure of that. I'm just wondering if, if, despite the charter saying that parks and wrecking, grounds, and building maintenance are under the DPW, if in fact, the director of DPW doesn't have a couple of people reporting to them, or that person who run parking wrecking grounds, and whatever it is, something separate, because it, what we got now is, is straining us.
I'd like to call the vote, because we're running fifteen minutes over. Does, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Stephen, did you wanna add something before we voted?
Yeah, I mean, I, this is certainly something that could enhance the operation, and I just wanted to register my agreement with Paul as well, I think it's a, a good idea. I did see the report that Richard sent from Andover, and I do think it's something that we should do in conjunction with, you know, looking at, not only, what does a new facility look like, how does, how does a, how does our department fit into it, and can we have a, if, if our department would look different based on recommendations, should the building look different? If we do have a new building as well, and I think that's, I think we should talk about this, before we put it on the agenda, it's a good idea.
Great, okay, all those in favor? Okay, great, it passes.
Five votes, and the town manager's agreement, too.
There you go, now we gotta...
Motion to adjourn. Risking running over and going backwards. How are we gonna take Paul's earlier motion on prioritizing the DPW facility as the primary capital project for the town, and move that to action? How are we gonna do that? Because that's not a great vote, and I supported it, but...
Yeah, you wanna know what the next step is?
Yeah.
Well, I think the next step was, I was going to revive the, number four, the selection committee. Do you wanna go ahead and vote on that, and get them moving?
No, because I, I, I was on the site selection committee. You know, if, unless you're gonna change the input, you'll get the same answer. And, and I don't see any different input, other than the fact that somebody's gonna say, well, we don't know if we believe in the tie-in bond report. Now, you know, I, I think if you're gonna do that, you need to have the, the select board say to a new committee, and I don't, wouldn't call it the site selection committee, say to the committee, we want a viable alternative for staying here, as well as a viable alternative for moving. And then we gotta compare the two for all the print, because all that other committee did is, pick a place to move to.
Okay, so we need to have, you prefer to have a motion for a new committee to look at functions versus site, and of course, this, this operational consultant has gotta come in as soon as possible, that almost seems like a priority, before we can really get the input on what other changes need to be happened, but we could start the committee.
It seems a shame to have a committee start working while you're parallel evaluating the department. I'd say one would follow the other, but I think that the problem is, if you have this consultant come in, and they're not finished until March, that doesn't give you a whole lot of time to start working on a, some alternative.
So you're not, so the suggestion is not that this is something that I, I would manage and report to the select board on, like, a project?
I'm, I'm fine with that, but like I said, from my personal opinion, Stephen, is, is, you know, clearly, the department, through, for good reason, has been pursuing everything based on the tie-in bond study, saying that that site is not a viable place to continue working. And I think that we need to be able to tell the people in town, we spent... "We spent time and effort trying to make it work, you know, by the way, it now can work, or, oh, by the way, it absolutely cannot work." And so, I think that that's a very different charter from finding another spot. Because once, if you find a new spot, I'm gonna assume it's what we call a greenfield site, then you just go to somebody, say, "Design me a DPW facility, and keep the price under X number of dollars." You know, and you don't have to worry too much about designing it, other than you say, "We want 40,000 square feet, or we want 20,000 square feet."
Well, I mean, I'd say, what do we need?
Yeah.
Or even step back, what does a department need to look like? What do we need for space for that? And then, an alternatives analysis of the current site, do, I mean, you're talking about spending significant amounts of money on environmental testing and things like that, but it's gotta be done. To do it right, it's gotta be...
If we're gonna convince the people in town that we're gonna spend upwards of whatever millions of dollars, because we have to move, we better have reasons certain why you can't stay there.
I totally agree.
And why you can't have part of it down there. I think that's, yeah. So, Richard?
I'm happy with Stephen doing it.
I think you need to get the operations valuation going first.
And we have a, you were very pleased with the Andover report, so...
I'm gonna reach out to the town manager of Andover and find out who he used and how he did all that, and do some preliminary work.
That something can be done by the end of the year, though, so we're not...
Oh. Yeah, I would say Monday.
Yeah, consultant to come in to review opera, yeah, they've got a boilerplate that they use.
And Mark, I think to your point that, once you do that, that leads you to your site. Whether it's down there, you know, so if we do everything possible, say, "Yeah, oh, yeah, it can be built there, or not." You know, ideally, you'll love to keep it in the same spot, because of the impact to the community and so forth. But, if that's not the case, that, that study tells us, you know, that site doesn't qualify if we want it, and these two do. So, I agree with, and how do we keep it a priority? Is that we gotta make sure that it's on our list every time we talk about capital.
Yeah.
I think that's our responsibility.
And, you know, when we talk operations, I'm also looking towards making this a modern DPW department. IT, complaint system, tickets, the whole thing. And so, that's why I was hoping the operational guy would tell us what we need, and that's gonna tell us what needs the facility to. So, maybe that is the first step, and we're not really slowing down on it. But, I will bring this up as a mini-agenda, so we can make sure we're not seeing it slowing down this year. Do I have a motion to adjourn? To executive session?
I'm sorry, don't, we're gonna hear about the town manager's report?
Well, actually, no, because we were supposed to stop at 9:30 to go to executive session.
Marie, I don't think we need to set up, I understand our desire to leave at 9:30, but I think we need to hear the town manager's report.
You want to hear the town manager's?
Well, I do.
Okay, well, if I don't have...
I have a particular question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I did submit a report that was prepared by Mike Rabel and the town engineer, Yemlip, about Maple Road, kind of a post-mortem, if you will, in terms of what issues beset that project, and lessons learned from it, and how are we making changes in our operations to make sure those issues are avoided to the greatest extent possible. As I, as you know, I was not here when that project was done. I kind of came in on the tail end, but I've spent a great deal of time discussing it with the DPW, not only Mike and Yem, but also the division heads for water, sewer, and, you know, our procurement level and everything else. And, you know, we've made some conscious efforts on the Merryweather job to show that we've learned from, learned some of these lessons. So, I'm, I'm pleased with the report. I think it shows a level of thoughtfulness and accountability by the DPW, and I welcome your comments or questions. I mean, I don't want to go through, I mean, I'm sure the public, I don't want to read the whole thing.
Right, I won't, this will be short, I promise. There's a lot in this. I spent some time studying it, and I have a number of ques, I mean, there are a number of things that, you know, just questions that came up. And to the extent that this document was intended to be presented to the public, so the public could read it and understand it, and have increased credibility, confidence in DPW, I don't think it accomplishes that. It's rather technical, I think most people, it would sort of fly over their heads. But, in the interest of time, perhaps what I could do is, I could email you with a list of questions that occurred to me, and maybe that could be addressed at a future time. Maybe we could have Mike come in and talk about the report, and address some of these follow-up questions. I do have a specific question, and I think I emailed you, Stephen, to ask you about it, about Ellington Street, because I've been getting inquiries about Ellington Street, and I went back to our last packet on Ellington Street, and it said it was done.
The gas company is working in Ellington.
And now, they're tearing up the street again.
It's a gas company.
Okay, so, so then, my question is, why do they have to keep tearing up the road? I mean, this is, like, for residents, when they see the same road, you know, torn up again and again, which is sort of a Maple Road issue, you know?
I can answer that specifically, if you want.
Yes, please.
And briefly. The Ellington Road project was a sewer main replacement. They cut a trench in the road, replaced the main, backfilled the trench last fall, let it settle, did the binder coat on the sewer trench. So, that was the town's capital project. And I believe another, another part of the road, there exists a gas main connected to laterals from houses. Columbia Gas is digging up that section of the road and replacing the main and their laterals, which, you know, the utility companies have, have the right to do. So, that's, that is not a town project.
And, and again, this was addressed in the Maple Road review about sort of coinciding these sorts of things? I mean, because didn't we just pave over Ellington?
Just the trench. Just the trench we made for the sewer main.
Okay.
And that's why, in the Maple Road thing, in the Maple Road report, one of the things, and, and most towns do this, every town I've been does this. At the beginning of the year, they go through, they meet with utility companies and say, "What do you all want to do in this town this year? Here's our projects, let's make sure we are coordinated." And most times, it works well. There are times where we, the utility companies are large corporations, and, you know, sometimes communication isn't great between divisions or what have you. And they'll go to the meeting, say, "No, we're all set, we're not doing any work over here, like Maple Road." And then, you get into the work, and all of a sudden, they say, "Oh, by the way, we want to do this work." And to some extent, you have to let them. Because it is in the service of the ratepayers as well. And once, once the road work is finished, we put a five-year moratorium on cutting into the road again, for obvious reasons. So, the DPW, I mean, I'm sure that's been done since time immemorial, and they all do it with, to the best of their ability, but, you know, the town does not control the utility companies. We found that out. We learned that lesson on an annual basis. So, in the case of Ellington Road, the whole road was not resurfaced, so the five-year moratorium was not, in fact, in effect. I do want to keep an eye for... Did he? Okay.
Any other questions on the Maple Road?
I guess the one thing I would ask, that if you are gonna have this reviewed, or you just look at, one of the concerns that I've had, comment to me is the lack of smoothness of the road. I mean, you just look down, drive down Maple Road, and you look at the yellow line, and the road does this. But, it's, it's, you know, and I don't know how that gets addressed, but it ought to have been addressed with the vendor at the time, and certainly, now, it's...
This is the first I've heard of it, honestly. This is the first comment.
If you drive by it, it's a rough ride.
Just drive down there during the day, and look at the yellow line, and the road's straight, straight enough that you can see the road doing this.
I never noticed that.
No, I didn't either.
Now, you won't be able to not notice it, let me tell you.
It's so smooth, I just...
Oh, it's not so smooth. It's terrible. It's not smooth at all.
Compared to what it was. It's a smooth ride.
Stephen, I guess the other question is, is, so, have these recommendations from Maple Road, now, will they be in effect for the Wilkins, Williams, Merryweather? In terms of November 15th, it's a tough, hard cutoff, and all that kind of stuff?
Well, we have, we have, one of the things that I'm doing that's different now, that wasn't done on, it wasn't here, is we meet weekly, the project team. I'm out at the site regularly. Our, representative of our engineering department is there all the time. We are trying to use Blackboard Connect and other tools at our disposal for better communication. We are backing off, you know, the work hours. And I do want to be clear, because I heard the comment someplace, I don't know if it was here, it's a different contractor. It's not the same contractor. So, that's doing, Maple Road's not the contractor on Merryweather, and some of the other jobs are gonna be coming up. Signage is an issue we placed the focus on, the specs were upgraded, I mean, all this, a lot of these things did, in fact, happen. When we were going over this report, that we were talking about work hours during the day, and we had a pretty bad couple of weeks there with the gas mains and work going on late. And I think that, since then, since we've kind of gotten through that troublesome spot on Merryweather, the work has been pretty well shut down and put back together by, I think, five-ish. I drove by today at 20 minutes of five, and it looked like they were done, and the road was restored, degraded, and, you know, the plates were down. So, I think they've done a much better job now, once they get through that spot. And like I said, it's just, we agreed internally that these were all common sense things, that I think, in the interest of doing the project as quickly as possible and as cheaply as possible, let some standards get away. And I think this report addresses those. And Alex, I felt like the report, one of the things I valued about this was, I thought it was approachable. And maybe, you know, I have a lot of project management experience, so maybe it's approachable to me, but I, I liked the way Mike kind of made it, you know, in somewhat less technical terms.
Since we're powering through, do you want to just give us a report on the joint administrative meeting you had?
Very briefly, I did, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent for business affairs, and myself, and the CFO, along with the chair of the school committee and the chair of the select board, met to discuss kind of, you know, internally, what are the takeaways from the joint legislative session, and, you know, committing to work together on issues going forward. You know, to derive the agenda, we took some of the issues that we thought were kind of common ground, you know, to build towards broader consensus. I think the goal was to work together as, you know, both, not only departments, but also as bodies, elected official, you know, elected boards. So, the agenda items, we talked about budget stresses. I mean, we didn't get into too specific details about the budget, but we all have a sense of, you know, Paul could, Posters could do some projections of what we think the revenue's gonna be. And we all know that we're gonna have some items coming down the pike that are stressful for the budget. Went over a few of those. One of the ideas that was generated by the joint session was a lecture series. We kind of talked about how that would look, and tied it into possibly Veterans Day, and use that as a kind of, create an ongoing program jointly, and that tied to veterans' events as well. And then, we did talk about it, the DPW facility, and how important we, just in terms of building up support in the community, as all of you have spoken about, talking to the school administratively, so they understand internally that it is a high priority for us, and we will educate them as well, so they can embrace it as a priority for them, you know, going forward. I thought it was a productive session, and I think we have scheduled a follow-up one. I don't know when the date is, near somewhere, but I think we were happy about it, and I think it's strengthening the partnership.
And I just want to make something clear. It was a meeting, really, between the administrations. Me, Michael, and I were just there to observe, and the agenda was set by Stephen and Marie Doyle, and it was run by the two of them, too. So, that's why I didn't come to you and ask for agenda, because it was really an administrative meeting. And I believe that the school committee said they're willing to meet with us. It's a second joint meeting, and I haven't seen any activity on the doodle poll to that effect, but, which makes me a little worried that my doodle poll might have crashed again. So...
It must have. It must have, because I didn't care.
You didn't get it either, okay? So, I will resend that out, and hopefully, we'll, we'll get something set up by the end of September. And then, we don't have an agenda on that either, so we'll have to...
And in the school committee, the joint meeting, are you imagining that we'd be discussing the budget? Or what exactly?
Well, I think that's something we can discuss if we want to go off of what, which was just basically a brainstorming session, and then decide maybe on the four topics, or just decide on the two topics. I think that budget is something that I would think this board would want to discuss, but we'll have to see as we go forward. Any suggestions on, before we do the next joint one?
I think you, we need to, if we, we had a discussion about OPEB. I think OPEB is a liability of the school department, as much as it is for every other department in town. We need to bring them into the discussion of the impact on the budget, when, you know, ratio-wise, it's the majority of school employees that are part of an OPEB liability. So, you know, when we talk about the budget, and, you know, we're gonna hear this again, because you talked about budget stresses, that, you know, the reality is, there is only so much money, but if we're gonna really address OPEB, it's gotta be in conjunction. And I think the school committee has to be there, because it's, you know, it's a town obligation. But, it's based on all of our employees, not just non-school employees. So, we really need to have that discussion with them, if we're going to attack it the right way.
Okay, motion to...
I'd just like, just a quick comment, that school, today was the first day of school, as people may or may not know, and the school building committee was outside, town manager, DPW, a bunch of people were outside this morning, during school drop-off. I'll say that things went well, but not as good as they could have been. They, there will, there will probably be signage changes, and a few other things that take place and procedural changes, but I think they're probably gonna let it, let it be as it is for a week or so, to make sure, see how it settles out. But, so, people who are frustrated by the traffic this morning, have heart, there will be some things done.
You should have got there a little bit earlier. I didn't see you all up there.
I was there at 7:00.
Mike and I, Mike and I were standing on the roof. It was actually a good vantage point to see the traffic unfold. And I think Mark is right, it's, you're still, I mean, you're still gonna have 1,000 people trying to get to one space, to one place at one time. You're gonna have traffic. But, I think it dissipates quickly, and the drop-off could be smoother, but I think Principal Birdy made the comment that, was it a school in the region that was new, and on their first day, they opened a couple hours late, because the pickup and drop-off was so confused, whereas I think they were a couple of minutes behind today only. So, I think that the efforts of the school building committee and the school and the town staff should be commended for a smooth, for, you know, official grand opening.
Any other select board comments?
I just have one comment. In the Long Island News, there was an article about the DPW tour, and Hope Tremblay was there, but she isn't here. I just want to make a connection, it says, "Member of the select board in the school committee." There's only one member of the school committee, and I really want that to be known, that this was something, I think, that was very important, and I would have, you know, now you talked about the joint administrative meeting, I would have been wonderful to have seen administrators down there as well, on that particular tour.
One question.
Paul, don't blink.
Paul Dunkley was there.
I'm sorry, Paul, don't blink. That's right. I coached football with Paul, so I think of him in a different light, I really do. But, so, I'll stand corrected, but, you know, we really, I was a little disappointed in the participation. I know Richard Liassi was there from the finance committee. I thought there would have been more finance committee members there as well, because of the scope of that project, and I'm a little...
Pete Landis.
Pete Landis, I'm sorry, school people, thank you.
You're two minus one each time.
It's not bad.
Not bad, huh? For two weeks. But, anyway, I just, I think it was, it was a little disappointing that there weren't more members of those important committees there to see it. But, otherwise, I'll give you that article, because you haven't seen it, and that's the only comment I have.
Anything else?
I move we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining. Specifically, I guess, the police.
Second.
A roll call vote.
Mrs. Angelides?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
And Mr. Grant?
Yes.
And Mr. Sanjelis?
Yes.
Okay.